It's been a day. I started in Went to Stone Mountain, went to Jones Creek. So it's been a day.
How are you?
Yeah.
You have to realize just how much time is in those two when you have to go in for. How much this has gotten dollars. You know, my only stuff.
What they're taking me.
That's sometimes what we have to do. On Friday. That's yeah. It's gonna take us. And then we get started. Gonna bring everything with me. Right. I went to. I know.
I grew up on John.
Once he stopped and he said, I said, for age. That's crazy. So not if it's. Yeah. Oh, no. We have a lot of. Four on the. We've got a place in the. That's mine. That's my happy place. But I swear, the sun here is so. Everything. All the. We had, I mean, but not so much. We're crazy, but we went down, but everything's ready. And we were dusting. Slides, the landing bay, metal parts on the landing base.
Yeah. So it's just gonna put together. So he's gonna give us. He said, no. He's gonna collect. So now. I'm not even. I'll have one. Thank you. And that's. Yeah. He flips me. Yeah. It's a project seeks the same.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, we set. It's funny.
That's two.
It's insane. If you're. Here on the. I don't know. Yeah. We're actually. Yeah.
They're not. Those really.
It's not.
Yeah. My contract. My. I think this is. That. Channing. To do this. So.
You can play up someone. This was. Strong. Just like. Yeah. Well, they.
Sure. It's one of. Yeah. It's. It's. It's.
Absolutely. Actually, most of the. The. That we.
Whenever. I showed this. There. Where you go. Right. Uh, so we're picking up.
Yes.
But it's. Uh, and they say. You're not going to make. Numerous. Well, the last few times.
There's. I could, I could be. I. So. It's so. I don't have any. Well, I think you have since. Guys. Excited. Obviously. We have. Definitely.
But. That. And. Yes. And I. Obviously.
Yes.
I like. Okay.
Excellent. I'll.
But. Thanks. For. Yes. Yeah. I hope it's not. We're. So. Yeah. I would. I'm tired. I don't. I don't. Please.
Yeah.
I can see. So I got.
I just. There's on the.
It's. It's.
Now. It's. Yes. Then your. It's. Look, it's like. Just like. Yes. Yeah. It's.
You have. Yeah. Oh, yeah. Have a lot. And I could. Out. It's. Amazing.
Yes.
If. Yeah.
Yes.
We never get to walk outside.
I'll say. Have.
So it's like. Okay. It's like. You know.
Yeah.
It's. Gotta go. When he first. I don't. I'm. I was. There was some. No, it's like. It's. Like a rod. We. I was. I knew. Not. It's.
That's. United. God.
There. They's.
Yeah. A lot. She. It's. Yeah. And. Yes. They.
Okay. Kind of. We don't.
We don't. Uh. And look, we don't.
We're. Okay. Which was very.
I mean.
It's not. And they. I mean. But you know. Like. I don't. If you're. And if. I know. It's. I think. It was. Sounds. So. There's no. You. Do. Like. We. Well. Yeah. 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 Like. The right.
Well, I'm. Target. I'm.
It's. I'm. You were not. Hands. That's. I. I'm.
Yeah.
Yeah. I do. You know. I. So. Yeah. I mean. Twenty minutes. Right. Yeah. I would wait to. I'm. See.
Yeah.
Like. Yeah. Going. Very. Yes. Something.
Yeah. It's.
I'm. Your. So. I probably. I'm leaving him. Oh, I say. And I just. I don't know. What's. I. In the. If. See. If. Yeah. A lot. That. Anyone. So. Okay. That being. The. I. You know. He doesn't. Looking. So. They are. Because of. Their. I'm. Saying. You. But you know. So. They. She. Very. So. You. You want. Yeah. That's. That was. Just. It's.
Now. It's. You know. You're. It's. Should have. Be. It's. So.
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 Yeah. I can. Yeah. That's what I want to hear. Three days. Yeah. My. You. They can't. I. So. These are. Yes. That's. To the. Men. Yeah. My. What's. The. That. Yes. Yeah. So. We're. So we were. I'm. I have. This. Maybe. Okay. 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 See. This. I think. Trust. You.
Also. I'm. It's. It's. I'm. It's. Very. You know. Okay. That's. Kind of. There.
It's. Very. You know. A lot. But I think it's. I know. It's. Those. Do. Okay. Other than that. You. It's. Like. You know. Yeah. Yeah. You know. The. For all. I. I. Right now. Well. I see. I guess. You did. Some. But. Yeah. Like. Right. And then. You. They. They wanted to.
And. Yeah.
And I'm. Moving. You're. On. I'm. You're. Now. You're. Yeah. Right. See. Very. Thanks. If. We're not. Yeah. You. They serve. Your. Right.
And. You're. That's. And. That's.
Yeah.
I'm. Right. But. Everybody. So. It's.
Wow. Absolutely. I. So. Especially. I mean. It's. People. There's. They. They. So. They're. Absolutely.
Yeah. Either. Either may or not showing up at all. So. I think this is going to be the project. Yes.
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 It's. I don't. I don't. You're. I like it. You have. Probably. You also. Very. You. I know. It's. Very. I should. I don't. I. I didn't. I was. See.
Say. But. Yeah.
That's. That's. I. But. But. She. When you're. So. Well. I. So. One. So. You. I'm. Anything. See. You. So. That's. I'm. Yes. I'm.
Yes. So. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes. Something.
All right. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to go ahead and call to order this July eighth, twenty twenty five, meeting of the Dunwoody Planning Commission. Going to go ahead and start with roll call to my left, please.
Debbie Horton.
Deb Cameron.
Scott Brown.
Alex Wallach.
And I'm Thomas O'Brien. Thank you all for being here. This is a an excellent turnout. First order of business is approval of minutes. We have two sets of minutes that we need to look at and approve. Starting first with June tenth, twenty twenty five. Do we have any motions on the subject?
I move to approve the minutes as written.
All right. Commissioner Cameron moves to approve as written. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Brown seconds. Hearing a motion or second, is there any debate? All in favor of approving these, raise your hand. Oppose, like sign that carries unanimously. Second item of business, June eighteenth, special called meeting minutes. May we go ahead and get a motion regarding that?
Move that we approve the minutes.
All right. Commissioner Wallach moves to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Is that Commissioner Cameron seconding?
It was.
All right. Thank you. Got a motion or a second, any discussion or debate? All in favor of approving the motion, raise your hand. Oppose, like sign. All right. That carries five to nothing as well. Thank you, everybody. We're sailing here. We're moving. We're moving. Any organizational procedural items for us to go through? Okay. Well, then we're going to start with unfinished business. And that first piece of unfinished business has slept twenty five dash oh two. That's one twenty five perimeter center west. Request for a special land use permit for a drive through. Because this is unfinished business and because we have heard public comment on this, commissioners, if we do wish to hear public comment on this, we will need to vote to allow ourselves as a body to do so. So just keep that in mind as we proceed. Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners. So first off, it has been a busy couple of months for you guys. So I just want to say thank you for all of your time and attention at these past couple of meetings. It is. It is greatly, greatly appreciated. The first item on the agenda is for the Zaxby's property. You all saw this case back in May. I'll make my presentation on this brief. But at the May meeting, several concerns were raised about the drive through increasing internal congestion within the parking area for the Ashford Shopping Center. In response, the applicant has provided an updated site plan and a queuing analysis. Can't tell you how many times I've misspelled queuing these past couple of weeks. I think I got it now. But below is a side by side comparison of the old site plan and the new site plan. You can see the changes are limited to the drive through and parking areas. I've highlighted those changes here. So you can see they've added a pedestrian connection shown in yellow. So that's a new sidewalk that wasn't there before. And they've reconfigured the parking lot to accommodate a drive through lane. And that's in the area outlined in blue. Previously, the two drive through lanes merged into one. In this version, four parking spaces have been removed and it's now two lanes all the way through. They've also made the exit to the area right out only. So that's going to route all of the traffic to the signalized exits at Old Perimeter Way. Old Perimeter Way is the the main street through the Ashford Center parking lot. It's the it's the one with the roundabout. So that's Old Perimeter. The queuing analysis indicates that the drive through configuration is able to accommodate the expected traffic within those designated lanes, thus reducing, you know, congestion impacts on the rest of the shopping center. Overall, staff's recommendation remains the same. The only thing that's changed is Exhibit A was updated to reflect the new proposed site plan. And just for reference, these are the conditions. And I know the applicant just has a quick couple of things to say, but if you guys have any questions, I am available.
Yeah. Maybe. Please tell us who you are and what your position. That would be a good thing.
Hi. Yeah. Sorry. My name's Madeline Smith. I'm the senior planner for the city of Dunwoody.
Good evening, members of the planning commission. I'm Kathy Sicker with Smith, Kim, Brolin, Russell, and it's a pleasure to be back with you. I promised you two things when I was here last time. One was that we would do a study to make sure that we were not creating problems with this drive through, which is internal to the site and at the front of this restaurant. And that we would provide you with an actual traffic study that backed up whatever conclusions were reached. And we have done that. So the conclusion of the study is that, in fact, we can accommodate the traffic that's going to be coming in and out of the site on the site itself. And we are relying on parking across the street in the parking lot that serves the development as a whole. I provided you pictures last time that showed that there were available spaces. And as you all know, the entire focus of this development, when it was developed by Bell Sembler back in two thousand and six or so, was that there would be shared parking throughout. So we're not doing anything to at all change the intent of that particular zoning in asking that we have our customers park across the street. Frankly, I think that's a good incentive to not drive. Certainly, if it's raining, I'm not going to be walking over there. And that's actually the backwards proposition, isn't it? So we won't talk about the rain. But I think it's an incentive not to drive if you have to park across the street regardless. I'm more much more likely to walk, particularly in good weather as a consequence of what we've done. The second thing that you asked about was making sure that we provided effective pedestrian connections. As you may recall, there was discussion about making sure that the stores that are to our east as relates to this site were connected all the way down to this road that actually enters the development as a whole. Interestingly enough, something else I told you I was going to go do was look back at the DRI approval of this original development. And all of those kinds of sidewalks were a requirement of the actual development of regional impact that was approved for the original development. So why they aren't there, I don't know. And of course, this was not in Dunwoody at the time. It was in DeKalb County. So all initial permitting would have gone through DeKalb County. It's certainly not something that Dunwoody neglected to do. But it's appropriate as a consequence, in addition to my client being willing to do it, to make sure that we do our part to add those sidewalks and make sure that the connections are complete. So we are willing to do that. Now, having said that, folks, what that means is we're probably going to have to make our building smaller. And we're willing to do it. That will have two practical impacts. One is that the actual traffic impact will be even less than what it was in terms of its analysis with the square footers that we have today. And second, it will create more green space on the site. Obviously, we didn't realize that. Well, first of all, the traffic study took a long time to do. We wanted to make sure it was done appropriately and right. And it actually was not finished until relatively recently. And we got it in staff on time. And hopefully you all got it in your packets. But as a consequence of looking at that from an engineering standpoint, we realized the the building needs to shrink, which will probably result in a redesign of the building more closely aligned with the size of a traditional Zaxby's store. And as a consequence, I know I'm throwing this out there to you this evening as sort of off the cuff, but it's I don't think it's too much to ask under the circumstances. We understand that the community wants to look at these renderings. As you know, I've been meeting with Dunwoody Homeowners Association all along on this. We expect you to want to look at the new site plan just to confirm what I'm telling you, that it will be a smaller building and there will be more green space. And we expect you to have an interest in what the architecture looks like in the smaller form of the building. So what I'm going to ask of you this evening is that you go ahead and approve as per the staff recommendation, but to tweak the conditions a little bit so that the first one reads that it is the site plan is attached as Exhibit A, but will be revised sufficiently in advance of the city council meeting for review by the community, by you, and by anyone else, and certainly by staff. And that may be an informal process. I can send it to you. If you want me to come back to another meeting and present it to you, I'm fine with doing that. Whatever you feel most comfortable with is perfectly acceptable to me. And then the second one would be the same kind of change with regard to Exhibit B, which are the elevations. So the elevations would also change, given the size of the building changing. And in that instance, we would also commit to coming back to the community, coming back staff and coming back to you, if you want to say it, well in advance of the city council hearing. So that is what I'm requesting tonight, and I very much appreciate your consideration of that. And I don't have anything else to say unless you particularly want me to continue on. And I know you've got a long evening.
All right. Thank you. And we may very well have some questions. But what we need to do now is, as a body, But what we need to do now is, as a body, this is the second time that we're hearing this. So if we do want to entertain comments, and it appears that there may be comments here, we'll need to open that up. And of course, same amount for and same against. So what is the pleasure of the commission?
Do we know that people are here to make comments on this development?
Yes.
Then I move that we allow 10 minutes for, 10 minutes against?
Our Commissioner Cameron moves to open 10 for and 10 against. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Brown, seconds. Is there any debate? All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed, like sign that carries. And so we will open 10 for, 10 minutes for, 10 minutes against. And we have at least one comment here. So with that said, let's begin with the fours. Anybody who wishes to speak in favor of this, please step forward now. Sir, please come up, introduce yourself, and be happy to hear what you have to say.
Hey, good evening. Tim Brown, 4509 Kingsgate Drive, Dunwoody. I'm here as president of the DHA. We did, in fact, hear and vote on this application, and we voiced our support for this application at the previous planning commission meeting. I think Zaxby's has done everything right here, even more so with respect to the revision in the queuing plan, the site plan, and the building size. Like to reiterate the DHA support for this application and hope that you would vote it forward.
Thank you. Anybody else speaking in favor of this, please? All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and proceed to those against. I have one comment card here, but that doesn't mean if you wish to speak, you're more than free to come up as well after I call Mr. Dillajustina, please.
Thank you. Good evening, Commission. Good evening, everybody. My name is Gidolajustina. I live at Towns in the perimeter right here at this part of town. Similar to comments that I raised before, I think, you know, we're trying to build here with the comprehensive plan that we just talked about in the previous meeting, is places to gather, right? Places to get our families together, places to bring our kids together. Ashford Lane has that on the inside part of that development, right? With the lawn, if everybody went there to the restaurants, you go into summer night, you go in a, you know, in the evening there, you have, you know, tons of kids running and families gathering together. A double drive-through goes against that purpose, right? A double drive-through is a, you know, place to swing by to get your food, to get away from this. Similar, you know, echo, you know, commentary before with Raising Canes, and then most likely in a few hours when you get to item number three on the agenda. I feel like we have so much good in the comprehensive plan and, you know, making this area more than just an off-ramp out of the highway and making this entire area, the perimeter, more walkable, more sensible, closer, and better defined as a place for people to gather. And I think a double drive-through defeats that. The restaurant, Zaxby's, love it, you know, anytime of the day. The special purpose for the double drive-through, I think, defeats what we're trying to be here with the comprehensive plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Will anybody else be speaking against? All right, seeing nobody, we're going to go ahead and move forward to Commissioner questions and discussion. At this time, go on to look to my left, Commissioner Gordon.
I don't have any questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Cameron?
No questions, thanks.
I just have one question for the applicant. Could you just clarify with the change to the drive-through from last time around? Can you tell me the number of stacking of the previous compared to the current?
It's probably easier to show you. Okay. The biggest difference, and I don't know if you can see me pointing or not, but the picture on your left, which is the old site plan, had the two lanes converging into one, which is inherently more clogging, I guess you would say, than keeping them separate. If you've been in many recently developed Chick-fil-A facilities, for example, they have the two that are separate and sometimes remain separate as they turn the building. And that's exactly the primary change. As a consequence, we can actually increase the number of vehicles in the stacked lanes, which even greater ensures that they will not be blocking the road, which, as I understood, it was the primary concern. You didn't want, like, again, unfortunately, Chick-fil-A, unless you're Chick-fil-A, having the ability to make sure that the cars could be serviced on-site. So that's the best way that I can explain it to you. Did I answer your question?
Yes, in more detail than I was asking, but I was actually, I was actually looking for the actual,
The word?
The number verse, like, I think maybe it was 13 last time, and then now, what, you know, is it 20 or?
Five, six, seven, eight, it's like 18.
All right. Thanks. That's all I wanted to know. Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Moll?
I also have a question for the applicant before you sit down. You've asked that we approve this now, but that there are to be changes. What is the advantage of approving it now and then having like to look at other stuff again versus just holding it until the final proposal?
You know what? If you would like to do that, I have no problem with your reasoning on that. And I'm, I have a client who has obligations to the person who is going to provide this property, as well as other things that are not something that you all should be concerned about. So if you would rather defer it, we're happy to take that deferral. I was just thinking that perhaps in this particular instance, given that we do have community support in large measure and as well as staff support, that if we could do it in a more informal basis, or as I said formally, if you want me to come back next month, I'll come back next month and show you the revised plans. I'm happy to do that. I would like to keep our spot on city council if it's at all possible, which isn't until September anyway. But I'm happy to come visit you again, sort of.
Thank you. Thank you.
Sure.
You good?
Yeah.
May I sit?
No, I've got questions for you, too. I mean, if you want to sit and try and be heard. With regard to the changes that are being proposed, I've got a couple of fields of questioning here. What sort of square foot reduction are we talking?
A thousand. A thousand square foot.
Leaving a total of how many square feet?
We had 4,000. It went from 4,000 to 3,000 effectively.
Okay. How many dine-in locations? How many tables or, I don't know how you?
I'm going to let the operations people answer these questions if you don't mind, because I want to make sure they're accurate. Who wants, it is what? Fifty-six spaces or tables?
Seats.
Seats.
There would be 56 seats in the newly designed?
Yes, sir.
Okay. With regard to the queuing study that was done, I've read this, and some of it means something to me. Some of it is a little bit, well, a little bit specialized. I want to make sure I understand what this reveals here, and I'm looking at the page, page number seven. It's labeled seven. I don't know if it's actually the seventh page in the packet. But placing orders queue AM, three vehicles. Placing orders queue PM, one vehicle. Am I understanding that during those, I want to make sure I understand what that says. I think I know what it says, but I don't know. Is that suggesting that in the morning hours between opening and presumably noon, that there are expected to be three vehicles in queue at any given time according to this study?
I believe that's a peak hour measurement, and I don't necessarily think that it's extended over the entire three hours. I think it is the highest 15 minutes of the two-hour period that runs from six, no, I'm sorry. Yeah. What am I thinking of? Seven to nine, and then four to six in the afternoon. So to answer your question, no. I think that that is a 15-minute interval, which is referenced by the study. So one every 15 minutes in the morning and three every 15 minutes on average in terms of afternoon or PM peak, which is that later time period. Does that make sense?
What I'm hearing you say, and I'm going to repeat it back to you because I'm not 100% clear, but what I'm hearing you say is that at no time during the ordinary operating hours, at no time does this study reveal, based on your all's experience and based on the science behind this, reveals that you're going to have cars outside of those queuing lines?
That's absolutely correct.
Okay.
Which is what we were hoping for.
And that's what the science says.
That's correct.
Okay. Okay. I think that'll do it for my questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Commissioners, at this time, we've got, we've got a concrete plan in front of us. We've got a plan that's not concrete in front of us, and we've got to decide what we want to do with this. And so we can, we can request a rehash of the actual formal plan, which kind of feels like why they bring us here to do this anyway. Or we can let this go forward because it does have what appears to be a considerable amount of goodwill behind it. What's your pleasure, Commissioners?
And if I'm understanding correctly, we see what we see today. The forthcoming proposal is that we have a shrink in the footprint, and we have more open space forthcoming. Those are the changes we expect.
That was my understanding, and I'm seeing them not out there. All right, what's the pleasure of the commission? Anybody have a motion that they want to form or discussion or questions?
I guess I would feel comfortable moving forward with an approval, even knowing that we have some forthcoming changes, but that reducing the impact. But I'm kind of questioning what are, maybe this is a question for staff, if there should be some kind of condition that we add some kind of teeth of what's forthcoming before the council.
And so we are generally, like, for something like this where the anticipated impact will be reduced, we're also perfectly fine if you all approve it subject to staff conditions. Then they submit updated plans when they have them or present them to you. So we are, okay, if you all do it like that, alternative is to put some wording in there that they shall submit updated plans to be reviewed by staff and then potentially to be presented to you all, sort of in an informal, in an informal meeting. And we're happy to do that, or it seems like the applicant was, was happy to come back, too. So those would be the two options.
What's your name?
All right, Commissioner, what's your pleasure?
I move that we approve the application, subject to the revised plans being submitted to staff for approval.
Can we also speak to, because I think, I think we're probably on the same page, but I want to speak to the, the pre-existing staff limitations here. Let's see, we had, there was crosswalk patio area being conditioned. Would you mind, before we accept that motion, would you mind making sure we wrap that in and then put the, I'm assuming you're making a motion in support of the uncertainty regarding the size of the building, but accepting the rest of staff recommendations? Okay. If I may ask you to restate that. So Madeline, you look like you were approaching. Did you need? Oh, thank you.
Okay, I recommend, or I move that we approve the application, subject to the requirement that the applicant submit revised plans to staff and subject to staff recommendations one through four as presented previously.
Okay.
Do you want me to go through?
Are you comfortable with what you heard? No, I think we'll go ahead and, we'll go ahead and push forward. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, Commissioner Cameron moves. Commissioner Brown, seconds. At this time, is there any debate or discussion among the commission? All right, all in favor of the motion, raise your hand. All opposed, like sign. We've got four to one. Commissioner Wallach voting against. Thank you. Okay, moving forward at this time, item four, RC 25-03, 4981 Ashford Dunwoody Road, request to rezone from OI Office Institution to PD Plan Development to allow the construction of an age-related multi-unit rental, age-restricted multi-unit rental building.
Hello again, Commissioners. So I'm going to provide a brief update on rezoning 25-03. As a quick refresher, this is the subject property. It sits at the corner of Ashford Dunwoody Road and Ashford Center Parkway. It's the Life South Blood Bank right up across the street from City Hall. It's adjacent to a self-storage building and an assisted living facility. The applicant proposes to develop an age-restricted rental community with rent and income limitations. The project also includes streetscape and roadway improvements along Ashford Dunwoody Road and Ashford Center Parkway. At the June 10th meeting, questions were raised about the building and site design, parking, age and income limitations, and all of the applicant to address those questions directly. However, I just wanted to provide clarity on the comprehensive plan. So brief overview, the zoning ordinance, per the zoning ordinance, recommendations must be based on the review and approval criteria. One of those criteria is that the proposal be in conformity with the policy and intent of the comprehensive plan. So the current adopted comprehensive plan is the 2020 to 2040 comprehensive plan. This is the adopted guiding policy document for this rezoning and all current rezoning. So, you know, the Zaxby's, the Raising Canes, 66 Promiscuity East, everything at the last meeting and at this meeting. You know, the adopted comprehensive plan is the 2020 to 2040 comprehensive plan, and it's the appropriate plan to base recommendations upon. We are currently, as a city, in the process of reviewing the draft 2025 to 2045 comprehensive plan, but it's not finalized, nor is it adopted. The city could have imposed a moratorium on zoning applications, but did not pursue this. So all of the current applications were prepared under the guidance of the 2020 to 2040 comprehensive plan. Actually, a draft of the 2025 to 2045 plan wasn't even available when these applications were submitted. You know, all of these zoning applications are essentially grandfathered in under whatever plan is the adopted plan when it's submitted. Same as if a new home was being constructed and we, you know, approved the new Unified Development Ordinance, we wouldn't make that person building that home go back and demonstrate compliance with the UDO. So that's sort of a comparable, you know, comparison. But overall, I guess, you know, I'm just trying to clarify the appropriate documents that we're supposed to be making our recommendations on. And so it's also what the staff report is based on, and like I said, what all of our current zoning applications are based on. And then a little further update, the applicant submitted a supplemental letter addressing questions from the last meeting. I've actually printed out those letters for you. They're available up on the dais. We've also received public comments. Every public comment that I've received via email, I've gone ahead and printed out for you, and that's also available to you up there on the dais. I also emailed a copy out of that, of that earlier as well. So overall, there haven't been any changes made to the site plan or the overall development plan. Those remain the same as the last meeting. There's just some additional documentation and some public comments provided there, and staff's recommendation remains unchanged. And I've just put up the recommendation here again for reference. We are recommending approval subject to these five conditions. Again, the applicant has a short presentation, and I am also available if you have any questions.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Planning Commissioners, Julie Sellers with Dillard Sellers, 1776 Peachtree Street. Here tonight on behalf of the applicant Dominion, you deferred us to this meeting to provide some additional information. We have done that through our letter. Sean Reinhardt, Vice President with Dominion, is going to walk through some of those updates. I also wanted to touch on, as some of you may recall, in the last meeting, you know, Paul and I were having a discussion, and I think that I was saying that a delay and a deferral would kill this deal. And I did want to clarify that in the moment, I didn't have the city's calendar in front of me to know that we would be able to stay on track. This deadline that we are working with is from the State Department of Community Affairs. This is the 2025 application packet. Our deadline is October 3rd at 5:00 PM. That is not something that Dominion is self-imposing or trying to rush the city to make a decision. That is a state mandated for the program that we are seeking the funding for. So did want to provide that clarification of why you do see us here tonight. I think some thought that this would not be coming back, but we are pleased to be here. And we do ask, because of these time constraints, that you do vote tonight and vote tonight with your recommendation to allow the mayor and city council to have the opportunity to make the decision whether that decision is up or down for this application. But we do ask you to go ahead and move this forward at the meeting tonight. I'm going to ask Sean to just talk to you for a few minutes about some of the additional clarification. We heard a lot of information last month, and unfortunately, a lot of it was not accurate information. So we've done what we can do, do both in the community and in our letter to provide you with accurate facts and information so that you have correct information to base your decision upon, which is certainly, you know, should be in accordance with the comprehensive plan and the city's criteria set forth in the zoning code. So, Sean?
Well, thank you, Julie, and good evening, members of the Planning Commission. Again, my name is Sean Reinhardt. I'm a vice president and development partner with Dominion. We're excited to be bringing this proposal back, and I'm going to try to be brief. I'll spare kind of the reintroduction to the project since we talked at length about it last time and just kind of recap who Dominion is, and then talk about some of the concerns and consistent feedback that we have heard and received. Dominion has been developing, owning, and managing affordable independent senior and workforce housing for over 50 years. We have about 70,000 residents and 40,000 homes in 22 states. And so we bring a wealth of both experience and innovation in our developments and really develop high-quality housing. In Georgia, we house roughly 8,000 residents in 28 homes. And we've been in Georgia for over the last decade with our regional headquarters just up the street at North Ridge Road in 400. I think Dominion is unique because we are not only a developer, a contractor, and an owner of this housing, but we also have our own management company, and we are managers and owners for the long term. And so everything that we do is to have a standard of quality and design that ensures that our buildings will last for decades. And so this community that we're building and are proposing to build here in Dunwoody is exactly what we are industry experts in. And I would probably, and I would say that we are the leading industry expert in senior affordable housing that is extremely high-quality, highly amenitized, energy-efficient, and designed to operate with excellence long-term. The next few slides that I'll go over are intended to address some of the concerns that we've heard, both at Planning Commission as well as in various meetings that we've had since then. First, I want to discuss parking. Dominion's developed over 40 senior communities totaling over 8,000 units with an average space of 1.21. I think one of the questions last time at Planning Commission was about the average space per bedroom, and that is .74. Our current site plan is slightly below that, and we are willing to add eight additional parking spaces so that we are exceeding our average of what we've developed. As a matter of professional design standards, we aim to meet our design standards that we have created. And the numbers that you see before you are based on research and precedent and not on speculation or assumptions. And the numbers that you see before you are based on research and precedent and not on speculation or assumptions. I think another concern was with respect to traffic. Staff did not require a traffic study for this community. And according to Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Manual, senior housing would provide less traffic than what could be built under current zoning. The next point that I'll cover is about who our resident is. We've heard a lot of times about who our resident will be um, and and the burdens on schools and the concerns about having children. And I think last time we covered extensively the kinds of federal and state restrictions, compliance requirements, financial agreements, and additional restrictions we impose on ourselves that all ensure that this community will be fifty-five plus. And I won't rehash them again, but every resident will be fifty-five plus, and this will have no impact on schools. There were also a lot of claims that this housing is not for residents that currently live in Dunwoody. And while this housing is not for everybody that lives in Dunwoody, there are residents that do qualify. Based on our income limitations, an individual who has worked hard their entire life and is now earning social security would qualify even if they had up to a million and a million five and additional assets on top of that social security payment. Just to drive that point home, we did some uh research on census data. And the US Census says that currently in zip code three zero three three eight, there are seven hundred and eight fifty-five plus residents who financially qualify to live at this property. If we were to have all of the seniors wanting to live in our in our community, we wouldn't meet thirty percent of the need. I think it's relevant to state that there are two other zip codes within the city of Dunwoody that we excluded from this analysis because they also include, you know, parts of Sandy Springs, and there's a part near Peachtree Boulevard that also doesn't doesn't include Dunwoody. Um, but but those have many additional qualifying residents. The final point that I'll make about our future residents is to just simply dispel the idea that our residents are transient, unengaged, or lack ties to the community. Our residents are active independent seniors. Most of them are fifty to eighty years old. They value living in a community where neighbors are close in age, they have amenities in the building, and they don't have to worry about maintenance. Our residents participate in social gatherings, wellness programs, enrichment classes, and volunteer efforts in the communities and outside of them. These are active seniors who volunteer and take part in community life. In addition, our housing, as required by the the state agency, requires us to provide services. And those services can include onsite health classes, nutrition, healthy cooking, asthma management, Pilates, strength training, group led aerobic classes, personal fitness classes, social and recreational programs, to name a few. There are things that are pro- that are housing, and our proposal is not. It is fifty-five plus independent living, but it is not assisted living. It is not memory care or congregate congregate living. It is not shelters. It's not public housing. This is not homeless or transitional hu- housing. This is all seniors who live independently but appreciate an affordable, thoughtfully designed home within the city of Dunwoody. There are also a lot of concerns about the surrounding uses and the compatibility for this particular site. I think there were a lot of comments about the need for senior housing but for lower-density housing, including townhomes or owner-occupied condominiums. And I think we can all agree that the concerns acknowledge that there is a need for housing, but maybe disagree about the proposal's density. So I wanted to just talk about the future land uses for a second. So what you see in yellow right here is the Ashford character area for the future comprehensive plan. And I want to just very briefly go through where our site is, which is the Life South Community in red, and then go through several of the other surrounding communities. Light blue, you have s- you have the the Dunwoody Baptist Church. In the dark blue, you have um six-story office tower with some parking that's underneath. And so on the backside, it actually reads as higher than six stories with structured parking. You have commercial office, and of course, you have City Hall. And the upper right, which is pink, um, you've you have five-story tuck-under garages for condominiums that's immediately adjacent to the single-family homes that are to the north of that. To the south of our site, you have three- and four-story surface park and some tuck-under garage, tuck-under parking with garages that is a multifamily community. Immediately to our east with the light blue is Sunrise. This is a Brighton Gardens community. And we did end up speaking with Brighton Gardens and their their corporate asset management team and and management teams. Um, and they believe that our use is compatible, um, especially given that we charge rents that are two to three thousand dollars lower than other independent living facilities, and it allows for our seniors to age in place comfortably, knowing that they will have retirement savings in place for when our seniors actually need to have some services. In orange, you have uh another five-story office tower with structured parking. And then in yellow, you have the a storage facility that is three stories. It also has gables that makes it show like it's four stories. And so these are the the pictures of our immediately adjacent surroundings. I think it's, you know, very evident that our immediate adjacent surroundings could be considered to be not single-family, not owner-occupied, and of higher intensity in use than what we're proposing today. At the end of the day, this development not only fits the current comprehensive plan and future land use as indicated by the staff, but it also fits with the future comp plan amendment. The surrounding uses are of higher intensity than what we are proposing here. And so we'd we urge you for a vote of approval, and that'll bring senior housing to the city of Dunwoody. It will serve existing residents, and it'll be built by a local partner that will manage the community for years and have the best interest of not only our residents but also the city of Dunwoody in mind. I'm gonna bring Julie back up just briefly to conclude. Thank you.
As Sean, I think, showed with the graphics, this is not a site that is surrounded by single-family detached homes. This is a commercial corridor in the city, and as the staff has recognized, this is an appropriate use for the property that is ripe for redevelopment. This is a land use decision for you to make tonight, and we know that you have heard from homeowners who occupy single-family detached homes who do not want to have a rental opportunity in this area, and quite frankly, in the city. We cannot change that opinion. We fundamentally have a difference of opinions. But your decision tonight should not be based on opinions. The city has taken the time and effort to develop not only its comprehensive plan that in multiple places recognizes this city needs senior housing. This city needs a ability to offer a difference of housing opportunities. When you are asked to rec- make a recommendation tonight, you have criteria that you are required to consider. And that criteria does not include the opinion of whether a homeowner who is vocal against rentals or not. It is more prescriptive, and it is based on a plan and a vision for the city, and that plan adopted by the city recognizes this need. With any application that comes before you, it is not a one-size-fits-all. I I believe that it would be fair to say there is no single application that's gonna satisfy everybody. Uh, I'll I'll say this, and I'll say it a little bit in jest, but um, you know, you could have a Michelin star restaurant coming before you that was a vegetarian restaurant. And I could raise my hand and say, I don't really care for vegetables. That restaurant isn't gonna serve me. So my point being, we know that there are folks here tonight. We know that there are folks that we spent a few hours with a few weeks ago. There are folks that live in this city who do not want this type of community here. And we don't pretend that it's an easy decision for you to look at those folks and vote in a manner that they are asking you to not vote. But what we are asking you to do is to make a decision tonight on behalf of the city and in accordance with the city's planning staff who is trained staff to look at what the city's plans that have been adopted. We have provided documentation. We have provided facts, and we have satisfied the criteria. And the staff agrees that we have satisfied the criteria. So tonight, we are asking for you to vote a recommendation of approval with the staff conditions, which I have on the screen, and allow your mayor and city council members to have the final decision. We appreciate your time and your consideration. I think we've provided all the additional information that that we could. Um, we regret that we know that this is never going to have um the full support of everyone in the community. And we also know that it is a service and a use that is needed, and we ask for your support.
Okay, thank you. Um, just a point of procedure. Uh, the mayor and city council will make their decision independent of what we do here tonight. So we're an advisory body, and I just I want to make sure that that we know that as well. Uh, once again, because this is not the first time we're hearing this. If we want to entertain comments from the public, we will need to vote to do so. So with that in mind, is there a motion?
Yes, I want to move to allow uh public comment. But I do want to request that we we heard a lot of comments last time around. We had a very long meeting. We're gonna have another long meeting tonight. So if people could be efficient and not necessarily restate everything that you did last time, but bring some good new points forward uh, with the understanding that we want to be efficient on our time, I would appreciate that. But with that said, um, yes, move to um allow public comment on both sides.
Give me a give me a minute count on that.
Okay, I I I know there's a lot of people here, so let's start with uh twenty minutes on each side.
Twenty minutes in favor, twenty opposed. Okay, we've got a motion. Twenty minutes in favor, twenty opposed. Is there a second?
I'll second, sure.
Commissioner Wallach seconds. We had a motion in a second. Is there any uh debate or discussion on this? All in favor of approving the motion, raise your hand. All opposed, like sign. Looks like that carries five to nothing. So we're gonna have twenty minutes on each side. Okay, all right. Uh, again, to Commissioner Brown's comments, we heard a lot of comments last time. Uh, definitely would ask folks uh to please bring something new. And also, please, uh, i- i- if it pleases you, please do not uh, if I can ask you not to just repeat the same thing over and over again, and I know that we're gonna hear some themes. But we definitely want to be respectful of everybody's time as we push forward through this. So with that uh said, uh, we'll hear the first person speaking in uh favor of this. I believe is that Caroline Kinsler? Ms. Kinsler? Thank you. Please introduce yourself and uh let us have it.
Um, my name is Carolyn Kinsler. I live at nineteen thirty-two Village Creek Court, and I'm here to speak in favor of this item. Um, I learned about this from the headline in the Dunwoody Crier stating that the Dunwoody Homeowners Association would not support the item. Um, it got me curious, so I started looking into it. I watched the meeting from last month. Um, I commend you all for sitting through that. Um, I got to watch it online and take bathroom breaks whenever I wanted. Um, but I watched all of the public comment, all of the discussion, and all of the presentations. Um, and I won't speak to any of the prior comments um, or any of the forthcoming comments. Uh, that's not my job. Nobody here pays me for anything. Um, but I I will share data that illustrates what I believe is the very real need in our community for a rental property that is age-restricted fifty-five and plus. Um, I'm a data nerd. Uh, I I do that by trade. And so all of the data that I'm sharing comes from the American Community Survey. That's a US Census Bureau product. So this is government data. It's using twenty twenty-three. That's the most available data set. Um, and then one twenty thirteen comparison. Um, so here are some data points. Uh, twenty-three point three percent of all residents in Dunwoody are aged fifty-five and over, so about one in four. Um, of all rented units in Dunwoody, just over twelve percent of those are occupied by those age fifty-five and over. So about one in ten. Um, this room might not show that, but one in ten people in Dunwoody uh, or one in ten over fifty-five are renters. Um, for comparison of all owned units in Dunwoody, it's it's about half, forty-nine point five percent of those are occupied by age fifty-five and over. Um, from twenty thirteen to twenty twenty-three, the median household income for both owners and renters rose by forty-four percent. In that same time span, median monthly housing cost also rose by forty-four percent. It makes it look like all things are equal between these two communities. Um, however, if you separate the data for owners and renters, the median household income for homeowners rose by seventy-one percent over that ten-year span, while housing costs only rose by ten percent. For renters, the median household income rose only by seventeen percent, whereas their housing cost rose by fifty-seven percent. Um, to look at what the median household income is in Dunwoody for all households, it's a hundred and nine thousand. But digging into that number a little bit, um, thirty-six percent of renters in Dunwoody, one in three make less than fifty thousand dollars a year. Ninety-nine percent of that population spends more than thirty percent of their monthly household income on their monthly housing costs, and that is what is considered cost burden in the US. Thirty-one percent of those who are aged sixty-five and over in our community, um, the number for fifty-five and over was not available in the data set. Um, thirty-one percent make less than fifty thousand dollars a year. Um, I believe that these numbers support that there is a population in Dunwoody that would absolutely benefit from and desire to live at the proposed community. The applicant has stated that it's likely a number of residents would be new to Georgia or to Dunwoody because they would be moving here to be close to family. I could only wish that my family would move closer. Um, the residents that would be part of this development would be our parents, our grandparents, even some of our existing neighbors, coworkers, and our friends. Those are all people that I want to share this community with. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else speaking in favor? Okay, we're gonna move forward to the uh those speaking against. Uh, I definitely want everybody to be aware we have allocated twenty minutes for this. So we would respectfully request that all the speakers be cognizant of the fact that there appear to be a lot of people here that want to share opinions, and the stack says that as well. So I would ask you to uh please uh do your best not to be repetitive and do your best to be mindful and respectful of those that perhaps share your point of view but want to have their words heard too. So uh with that said, uh, beginning the against, uh, Mr. Brown, Tim Brown, please.
Good evening again. Tim Brown, um, forty-five oh nine Kingsgate Drive. I'm here as president of the D H A. We heard this uh presentation at our June meeting. Um, partially at your urging that they come and see the D H A. We appreciate that. Uh, at the end of the presentation, uh, the board entertained two motions. Uh, the first motion was to approve this project with conditions that failed. A subsequent motion was put on the floor to deny this project. That motion passed. So the crux of those two motions is that the official position of the D H A board is that we would not support this project moving forward.
What, real quick, what percentage of the board was there for that vote?
I would say we had a great turnout, probably seventy-five percent of the existing board or the sitting board, which includes the executive board and the at-large board. We had a great crowd that night. Both with board representation and public representation.
Thank you. Dan Lashinsky.
Thank you. I'm Dan Lashinsky. I'm a twenty-nine-year resident of here in Dunwoody. We actually moved here during the weeks of the Olympics. For anybody keeping score at home, it was hot. I'm going to go off script actually right now because I heard something that tonight that just set my teeth on edge, and it was repeated at the meeting in the annex. It was when the attorney said, we understand that there are people here who don't want this type of community here. And I'm going to respectfully say, we just don't want this type of community there. It does not fit into that a lot, into that lot. If you were here at the June tenth planning meeting, you would have heard eleven Dunwoody citizens speak before you, each asking the board to deny this request. Deny, 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 deny. I'm adding my voices to twelfth. I suspect there are folks behind me who probably agree. I'm not going to go through the litany, as you asked, of the reasons why these eleven people asked to have this request denied. And in fact, in, in a sense of fairness, let me summarize those folks who were speaking to ask you to approve that. These are the Dunwoody residents who asked you to approve that at that meeting. And as I look back on their words, asking you to approve it, the Dunwoody residents actually said nothing. There weren't any here. There's only this one young lady here who presented a very fair case. But it's obvious the people of Dunwoody do not want this there. Yet here we are. It's a very desirable piece of property, and I can see why it wants to be developed by these folks. And if the board, when the board, I'm very optimistic, denies this request, this will still remain a very desirable piece of property. It won't sit idle. It won't remain vacant. So I'm going to again ask the board to ask you to deny this product, this project. The citizens will reward your patience, excuse me, the citizens ask that your patience be set, be, be applied here. And we wait for a project that would enhance the community and that we could all get behind and be proud of. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Bob Wittenstein.
Robert Wittenstein, eleven forty-six Board of Court. With your permission and to perhaps keep us from being here too long, I'd like to ask that those of you who have deny signs, just hold them up. And you don't have to all speak, but you could get a sense for the room without having all of us do that. And maybe we'll wait while Kathy Cobb sticks a picture. We, we appreciate the press. All right. I, I really have two things to say, and, and one is that this is the wrong place for this development. It's too dense, it's too small, it's too close to single-family homes. And I will also say that I welcome age-restricted housing. I welcome rental housing. I welcome income-restricted housing. We need that in Dunwoody. We need all the variety we can get. But you're not being asked tonight whether or not we ought to have age-restricted and income-restricted housing. You're being asked whether or not you can build a really tall building on this site right now, and I would encourage you to deny that. And I'll make a prediction. And I spoke to this a little bit last time I was here. This building cannot be economically built out of steel and concrete. If you, if the city approves this zoning change, this applicant will leave the site exactly as it is until the regulations are changed so they can build it with two-by-fours and make it the tallest stick-built building in Dunwoody. This is not a viable project as a steel and concrete building. Today, you can't build it. And if we change the zoning, what we're going to do is set the city up for either a change to the fire code or being sued by the applicant to change the fire code. Because this will require a change to the fire code in order for this to be economically viable, Wittenstein predicts. Thank you.
Thank you. Jerry Penn.
We're opening this up to public comment. Much appreciated. I'm Jerry Penn, a forty-four-year resident of Dunwoody North. And I'm speaking to you today as a seventy-seven-year-old woman who, the last place I would want to live is in a five-story apartment building with elevators in a location that has had many power outages. There, in the DHA meeting, they stated they don't know if there'll be a manager on the property. When you have an average age of residents at age seventy-six, as stated at DHA, not having someone on the property is unsafe. Having elevators that might not be able to function via power outage leaves people stranded on high floors who may not be able to get out of the building. I think that seniors need affordable and not so much affordable housing in our city. But I will tell you that I have a neighbor who was my neighbor for thirty-nine years who needed to get out of her split level and moved to Johns Creek, did not stay in Dunwoody, where they have a senior fifty-five-plus senior community. They're semi-detached homes. They're condos, not rental. And all of the living is on the first floor, and they have a loft. They have a garage. To have unassigned parking spaces with seniors' average age of seventy-six where they don't have an assigned parking. I'm sure you've all seen people with their keychains trying to find their cars in parking lots. That is not a good thing to not have assigned parking spaces. And really, above-ground parking where cars are sitting out in the sun for seniors is also not good. I hope that you will consider senior housing in a more viable place. We do not need high density at that corner. And by the way, we have school buses that service all those high-density apartments at Ashford-Dunwoody Road, including the Jefferson Place. Let's keep those buses safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve Barton.
Thank you very much. My name's Steve Barton, forty-nine eighty-three Lakeland Woods Court, and lived there for twenty-nine years. I pulled out my copy of The Story of Dunwoody, not eighteen twenty-one to two thousand and one, to look up, and it turns out there's several, several bits about this piece of property in, in this history. First, first off, though, the DHA started back in nineteen seventy as a force to restrict the development of apartments. Subsequently, subsequently, the, it says, back in nineteen eighty, increased pressure on undeveloped land brought bitter disputes. DeKalb Commission Chairman Walt Russell proposed to widen Ashford-Dunwoody and Mount Vernon Roads, an issue that had first surfaced back in seventy-nine. Although the DHA was able to stop the Mount Vernon proposal, bulldozers rolled on Ashford-Dunwoody. The DHA spent seventeen thousand in legal fees trying to stop the road widening. And the case went all the way to the Georgia, the Supreme Court of Georgia. Well, although the county had used money for a bond development for sidewalk improvements, the court ruled that the county had acted, had not acted capriciously. The Georgia Legislature subsequently outlawed the use of bond funds for other than designated purposes. It also notes that the battle cost Walt Russell, the commissioner, the commission chief, commission chairman of DeKalb County, his political career. We didn't have a CEO at that time, but the DHA moved on and supported underdog Manuel Baluff, who became, became that guy. One of the things about that two-lane development that was opposed was that it was going right to the heart of Dunwoody. And it created this, when you look at the Perimeter Community Improvement District or that district that was just put up with the, the different parcels being used, it is something out of the normal range of where the perimeter center is. And subsequent battles in nineteen eighty-two to eighty-four had ended up with the current situation where there's apartments on the other side of Ashford-Dunwoody. There's townhomes facing what used to be Dunwoody Elementary School. And we have the two office buildings that are there. Back in April of nineteen eighty-four, The New York Times noted that those office buildings gave Dunwoody more office space than downtown Atlanta. And it noted the uproar over all of the citizens who didn't want this commercial and, and high-density residential development right here. It's a subject that goes back a long way. We certainly didn't think when we got a city that we'd be talking about apartments right there. And that really is what the problem is. Down in perimeter, fine. And as for trusting the enforcement methods for fifty-five plus, gee, I just don't know. I have a feeling, I, I don't feel good about that. I hope you vote deny with your fellow homeowners and citizens here in Dunwoody. Thank you.
Thank you. John Isley.
John Isle, nineteen thirty-six Stonehouse Court. This is the first time I've come to a meeting like this. I, I remember when the city of Dunwoody was created. As I remember, there, there is a city of Dunwoody today because of zoning. We, we lived in the tip of DeKalb County. Schools were good. Roads were good enough. Place fires were good. Zoning was the problem. We had those big billboard signs that the, that the city, that the county approved. We had some construction here. And pretty quickly, there was an initiative to form the city, and it passed. And that was because the, the Cab County wasn't listening to the city of Dunwoody residents. So fast forward today, here we are again. We have, one of the lawyers over here said, now, don't get, let facts, don't let your opinion get in the way. Listen to the facts. Well, I've got an opinion. I think a lot of people here have an opinion. My opinion is to deny. And just because someone has an opinion, a reason to have a feeling that they want to deny, that shouldn't be dismissed because of some, what I think are some made-up numbers. One of the numbers I saw on the memorandum was, it said currently during rush hour, eighty cars an hour use that driveway. They said, going forward with two hundred and twenty residential units, that number is going to be about half, forty cars an hour during rush hour are going to use that driveway with two hundred and twenty units and that much plus parking spots. Quite frankly, I don't believe those numbers. I think at between four o'clock and five o'clock, there's going to be way more than forty cars pulling in and out of that road to pull, to go to, go to Dunwoody, go to the perimeter mall, wherever. Or that is going to be Uber drivers and Uber Eats and everything else. It's going to be a real crowded, congested, congested place. No traffic light. Probably someday the traffic light will come in, and it's just going to be set a precedent for what's going to be the next thing that happens at the, with the storage unit. It's going to be another multi-unit, multi-floor traffic mess that this was supposed to be a transition area between perimeter mall and the residential area. And I, I see that changing if this is approved. I, I hope you vote to deny this. Thank you.
Danny Shortel.
Danny Shortel, twenty-eleven Woodland Way, Dunwoody. First of all, thank you for your, doing your civic duty here. I know all of you fairly well. But, you know, just go back here. The gentleman just brought up zoning. Zoning was the number one reason why we became a city. And the zoning was based back, back on the DeKalb County five-two rule where they had a, if you had a five-story building, or excuse me, a two-story building, you could tear that down and build a five-story apartment building without any approval from anybody in DeKalb County or anywhere else. And so that, when the tornado hit in nineteen ninety-eight, it knocked down several office buildings right along Ashford-Dunwoody Road. Those all became apartments. That was the emphasis for the boot of the cityhood. And we've got good luck with owner-occupied housing right down by the old city hall, right down the Dunwoody Village, and right across from the library. All those are owner-occupied homes, which we prefer here in the city. Are we against apartments? Well, we've got about eight or nine thousand of them, so I guess we're not. But the whole, the whole idea is, you know, that, there's a better use for that up there. And the whole idea is that you all have to decide what is the best use for it. You know, the staff, you know, I hear really recommendation. But you know, they're not elected by anybody or appointed by anybody. They're, they're staff members. But, you know, you are approved a time limit on the, on the Lidle, on the Lidle case up there. And the, the staff disregarded your approval of that, which did not sit well with us at all. But I think, you know, that is the real reason why we're here tonight. That's the wrong spot for this. You want to have senior housing somewhere? Fine. Have it owner-occupied. That's what we want. That's what we need here in the city of Dunwoody. Thank you so much for your service to the citizens. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Ms. Meredith Shortel.
Hello, Meredith Shortel, twenty-eleven Woodland Way. Thank you for your service to our community. I too want you to vote tonight, but I want you to vote no. I want to stop this right now. Owner-occupied is the way to go. We want senior citizens to have a great place to live. They don't belong on a high-rise. It, it's amazing when you, the difference of opinion. When I drive down Ashford-Dunwoody, I see beautiful colonial office buildings, the Baptist church. And then I see apartments, apartments, apartments. Frankly, we have enough apartments. We inherited High Street, as you know, before we became a city. And we're dealing with it. I want you to respect the opinion of the Dunwoody Homeowners Association and the citizens. They are interested in senior housing, but only if it's the right senior housing. They're interested in the beautification of our city. And owner-occupied is the way to go, not rentals. So I just ask you tonight to consider the beauty of the street as it is and keep that in mind as it progresses to the perimeter and keep things within their zoning. And if I repeated something that was already said, I'm sorry, but I was not at the DHA meeting. So these are my ideas, and I hope you accept them in good faith. Thank you.
Thank you. Cheryl Strickland.
Hi, I'm Cheryl Strickland. I reside at forty-five oh six Chardonnay Court in the Ashford, in the Ashford Chase subdivision, which is right off of Valley View, which is pertinent because, again, there's a number of folks here mentioned today. That's one of the areas where, frankly, all single-family homeowners. And when I moved there, when my husband and I moved there in nineteen ninety-six, we were not as, all these parks weren't here. And they're here now, and that is of concern to, to us. I've been an active participant in attending a lot of the H City planning conversations, a lot of the comprehensive planning conversations and various sessions around town. And, and I think, and, and I and so many other people there have given you guys a lot of input. I understand it's the twenty-twenty-five plan. But I, this is, but at the rate at which it's growing and changing and the momentum from the mall areas creeping up after Dunwoody, that is really pertinent to what's going on right here. So I am not against senior housing, not against affordable housing. That is really pertinent to what's going on right here. So I am not against senior housing, not against affordable housing, but. As so many folks have said here today, I do request respectfully request that you deny it at that proposed location. Because I don't think that's the right location for the city of Dunwoody. Um, yes, thank you so much for your service here tonight and for your consideration.
Thank you. Dan Weber. Dan Weber.
Good afternoon. Uh, Dan Weber, eleven seventeen Winter Hall Way, Winter Hall Lane, Winter Hall subdivision. I don't know that I've had a chance to meet the five of you, but thank you for your service to the city of Dunwoody and the community of Dunwoody. I was heavily involved with the formation of the city of Dunwoody in two thousand and four. I ran through the state senate. One of my motivations was to have a city that could deal with these issues that you're hearing from the community tonight. And these are the longtime residents of Dunwoody you're hearing from. These are the single family. They're the ones that make Dunwoody the special place it is. The people who rent here are wonderful people. Most of them are transient. They're not here thirty years like I've been here. But I wanted to say to you that I have tried over the last seventeen years, once the original. City council got up and running.
All right, I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt you. It looks like we hit our twenty-minute mark.
Okay.
What's uh, I, again, you you can all you want, but we're going to follow the rules here. We're going to make sure everybody's treated fairly. Okay? So the editorialization, that's enough. Thank you. I would ask the pleasure of the commission with regard to uh. Uh, adding some time. Does anybody want to hear additional comment? Here the rest of Mr. Weber's comment.
I'll move to add another ten minutes of public comment.
Commissioner Brown adds another ten minutes. That would be to both sides. Is there a second to that?
A second.
Commissioner Gordon seconds. A motion of seconds. Is there any discussion? Oh, yes.
I would like to see if we're going to add time to it, that we count the number of people who are remaining to speak. And see if we can divide it equally so that each person has a certain amount of time. Rather than being asked again to extend the time.
As long as we treat both sides fairly.
Right.
And we are now at the end of our comment cards. So my anticipation is that we are done here.
I see. Well, then I would like uh, to make a friendly amendment that it be five minutes.
And we've got a motion and a second. So if you want to vote against that, you can. Uh, we'll see what that motion does and then we can form another one. Uh, we've got a motion and a second. Uh, all in favor of that motion as it's written, raise your hand. All opposed, like sign. Okay, we got three against two. We're going to have the uh, the 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 motion that carries. So we're going to have ten for and ten against. Uh, Mr. Weber, please continue. Uh, if we could reset the clock and we'll, we'll make it up on the back end.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
Uh, I wanted to add a little perspective. From from my personal perspective, once the city council got up and running in two thousand eight, two thousand nine. Over the last seventeen years, I've been trying to stay away from the city of Dunwoody politics. This is the first time I've addressed a body in this chamber. And the reason is, I read John Henigan's, one of the original city council members, along with Robert Wittenstein. Comments in early June about the comp plan. The comp plan, he says, contemplates density at every turn. That got me interested enough to spend some time studying it and getting involved in this. There's a bigger issue here. Uh, sixteen, up to sixteen stories in perimeter, up to ten stories in Georgetown West. Up to ten stories of apartment units to be allowed on Peachtree Industrial. Uh, five stories in many other locations, four stories in Dunwoody Village. Uh, that's a lot. And on top of that, you have this proposed here. If you really get to know the people of Dunwoody, and I assume you know them well, there are many of us who have raised our children. We're in the traditional single-family home. And we would like to downsize. We don't have good options in Dunwoody. The options are limited enough that a longtime friend who was a former city council member. She and her husband moved to Woodstock. Just a few years ago. You probably know who that city council member was. But. This character area, as they call it around here. Yes, it has an office building next to the property we're talking about. But on the other side of the office building is what? The Ashworth Town Homes. It's within that area bounded by Mount Vernon, Shamlee, Dunwoody. Ashford Center Parkway and Ashford Dunwoody. Those townhomes are right across from the library, the school center, easy walk to the village. This location as well is an easy walk to those same places. I hope this character area can be changed. I hope you can adopt a vision consistent with what everybody is saying here tonight. That this character area here, no more apartments, say from Valley View right here. Maybe perimeter center west. We've got the, the Valley View Development. Single-family homes. We have Ashford Chase to the south of that, extending down behind the Walmart store. This direction, we've got Dunwoody Station. The character of this area is somewhat mixed. But predominantly, let's have an area where we push back where residents like us have a place to go. And the way to do that is to take this character area, the property in question. And I would predict at some point in the future, those office buildings will have to be redeveloped. Put townhomes there. People can walk to the community. Our children can move back to Dunwoody. Our son wants to buy our house. Right? We would like to have grandkids in Dunwoody. I don't want to have to move to Woodstock. I would like to have a nice townhome to move to. You can say that we're against apartments, but Dunwoody already is, as I said years ago, apartment city. Which is what drove the cityhood movement. Because the. Powers that be in DeKalb County at that time did not listen to us. They were quick. And that, as I say, with this new comp plan, there's plenty of opportunity for new apartments to be built. And I suspect this is not the last time you, as the planning commission, is going to have to address some of these issues. Around the city of Dunwoody. I do think overall, the comp plan could have a drastic effect on our schools. My wife spent her career in DeKalb County Schools, was the principal at the middle school. We're well familiar with the schools. Drive around the middle school, drive around the high school, lots of trailers, right? With the current configuration of Dunwoody, those trailers are probably permanent. With ten-story apartment buildings potentially being added, five stories elsewhere. How is that going to affect the schools? I've got a larger concern. It's enough for me to come out and speak about it. So. I'm asking you as a commission to think about a vision for this area where city hall, the Baptist church, these important neighborhoods are located. To the extent there's going to be redevelopment, let's give the community of Dunwoody something. I have friends in the back I was at a party with. We talked about this. They would like to downsize. And think about downsizing out of these traditional single-family communities. What that does is a new family moves in with young children. We need that. That's the heartbeat of Dunwoody rather than the old folks hanging on to their houses with nowhere to go. So there's a balance. There's plenty of apartments contemplated around Dunwoody, but we've got to have some balance. And we've got to think about the long-term residents people have done with. So, thank you for your attention.
Thank you. We do not have any more public comment cards. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak against who has not yet spoken? Yes, sir.
Uh, I'm fairly new to Dunwoody. I've been here about three years. That's why I didn't fill out a comment card. But I live in the area.
Uh, would you, would you please introduce yourself?
Yes, I'm sorry. Juan Lago and fourteen fifty-six East M Drive, which is at the end of Ashford. Uh, Center Drive by, across the library. Okay. And my wife and I walk that area all the time. And the one thing I can say about the aesthetics of the walking paths that we have from where we live. Is uh, we come down Ashford Center Parkway and then go up the hill to Ashford Dunwoody. Go that way, go this, go to the village. And it's very pleasant. Uh, I know that mention was made about the office buildings. The office buildings are sunk in a hole. So when you walk by, you don't see the tops of the buildings. Actually walk in off Ashford Dunwoody to the offices and I'm looking down on them. This building's going to be up in a promontory atop of the hill. It's going to be what, six stories on top of a parking deck? It's going to be a massive amount of construction that's going to look extremely unpleasant as you go walking through it. So that's my one point. And and I don't want to address the uh, issues that have been very well covered about uh. Affordable housing and senior housing and all that, because that's, you you, we all know that in and out. The other thing is that as I come up, Ashford Dunwoody to my home every. Now and then. I'm retired, so I don't go up and then so so much. Uh. Altitude of buildings begins to go down around here, with the tallest thing being the new, the old uh, bank building that is now uh. The uh, Autistic Center. Okay, this is going to be towering over there. So think when you de- decide whether you're going to recommend or not, what you're doing to the aesthetics of the neighborhoods that we all live in. And that's going to be on you when you make your decision or the council when they do. As to what they have done to the aesthetics of the Dunwoody Village and the residential areas up here. And I agree with what Mr. Weber has said about the six-story towers and the ten-story buildings. Is that what we're going to all be living in? I'll move to Midtown if that's what you're going to do. I mean, I moved here from Brookhaven and 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 let me, let me let you know, I've been in the area a long time. I lived uh, Brookhaven across the freeway. And I've lived in Sandy Springs across the city line. So I'm very familiar with what what goes on around here and what's available. But if you want to turn this into Midtown, I'll move now. There's more things to do down there. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. In the time we have left, is there anybody else who wishes to speak against? I see a hand back there. Please come forward. And I believe I'll get ahead of Paul saying it when you're all done, if you would fill out a comment card and provide it to one of the team.
I wasn't planning on.
No, you're all good. Thank you.
Diane Huckook on forty-nine fifty, which passed. And Dunwoody lived here over thirty years. Um. I've had my chance to express my opinion uh, at the original meeting, but something struck me. When the comment was made that this is just opinion and not fact. When I was reaching out to uh, the, my representatives in Dunwoody. And I went on to the Dunwoody city site. I came upon the org chart. And I was really excited about how that org chart is represented. I don't know if many of you have seen. Because the CEO on this org chart, it says citizens. So the citizens are who you have to appeal to. That's the opinion of all of us in this room. And every one of us that is here is probably representing ten or twenty others who could not come here. The timing is terrible because it's summer and people are away. So I just wanted to remind.
Thank you. I'm, I'm going to respectfully interrupt you here.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, because we extended the time for those speaking against, I want to offer uh, or I'm required to offer. Uh, additional ten minutes. Is that, that was ten minutes, correct, Paul?
We have uh, we have sixteen minutes of the original time left and then the additional ten minutes.
Okay, so we have plenty of time for those in favor who wish to speak. So again, I don't have any other public comment cards, but if there's anybody here who wishes to step up and speak in favor of this. Uh, step up and be heard. Anybody? Okay, seeing none, we're going to go ahead and press forward. At this time, uh, we'll go ahead and open things up to uh, questions and discussions. Uh, of the commission. And once again, we'll go ahead and start to uh, my far left with Commissioner Gordon.
I really don't have any questions, but I'm pretty confused.
Are you able to share why you're confused? Or is that something we want to try and tackle as a commission? Because your confusion may be shared by others up here.
Well, I understand, you know, where everyone's coming from. Some of it feels like what-ifs to me. So I don't really know what's going to happen. Um. So I would like to get thoughts of my fellow commissioners.
Okay. Commissioner Cameron.
I have a couple of questions for staff. Does this application comply with the, the comprehensive plan in existence now?
Uh, it is, yes. The opinion of staff that uh, the proposal meets the vision and goals. That are stated in the current adopted comprehensive plan.
What is the distance of this site from the nearest single-family home?
Um, as the crow flies, um, about five hundred feet. Um, i- if you're walking, it's maybe like point two miles. If you walk up Ashford Center Parkway to the um, development. Uh, closer to um, the intersection with Womack Road.
Those are my only questions. Thanks.
Commissioner Brown.
Okay, um, I asked most of my questions last month, but do have a couple of staff questions and a couple. Uh, but questions for the applicant, but Madeline, since you're already up there. Um, I guess my first one is kind of building on uh, Commissioner Cameron's question about the comp plan. So. Uh, I understand you guys are judging by the, the currently adopted comp plan, which as. Mentioned earlier, CEO is the citizens of Dunwoody. Citizens set the comp plan as the vision that we're to follow. Um, I know there's the comp plan that's underway. We have a new vision coming forward, but it's not yet adopted. Where we've kind of broken out this section, calling it Ashford instead of perimeter center. It's supposed to provide a little bit of a step down uh, from perimeter center to this area. Um, I, I don't have so much an issue with the rezoning and the land use being proposed. But I do feel that the intensity and height are not aligned with this forthcoming vision that we're setting for the city. So I just wanted to clarify again what you said earlier about. We, we are kind of tied or grandfathered into judging by the comp plan that's currently adopted versus the. Comp plan that's coming forward. Because I, I look at it and see it being a little too intense for the new vision that's being set. But I want to understand what our marching orders are.
Yeah, and I understand Scott, you've, you've been on the steering committee, so I know you're intimately familiar with the uh, with the draft comprehensive plan. Um, but the, the nature of a rezoning or special land use permit application is that. Uh, you go by, we're obligated, you know, as staff and, you know, as the planning commission. To review it based on the adopted policy. Um, and that is the, the twenty-twenty to twenty-forty um, plan. And so like I said, you know, as staff, we're also familiar with the draft comprehensive plan, but it wasn't part of the consideration. When we wrote up our analysis.
Thank you for clarifying that. Um, I also, uh, and this could be for you or Paul or Richard, whoever could best answer this question. But came up a little bit last meeting and one of our, one gentleman spoke to this earlier, but this. Um, this issue about stick-built versus um, concrete. This issue about stick built versus concrete. Construction and the building code and possibly some forthcoming changes to that building code. Could you all just kind of outline what we've got in place now versus what may may be coming forward? Because I I'm not quite clear on what the the issue is there.
Yeah, so our code. This is completely separate outside of the zoning ordinance in chapter eight. It has additional. Building requirements for stick-built. Multi-story apartment buildings, you know, essentially requiring. Additional fireproofing and ventilation requirements and. The if you were going to do stick built, you have to meet those additional requirements for stick built. Otherwise, you have to do. Steel frame construction. So that is the the nature. Of those regulations and. The city council has not yet even begun to discuss the. Stick built versus steel and concrete, you know, revisiting that. So we don't necessarily want to speculate. You know, on how the city council would would approach an amendment like that.
So what would be required currently if this were to be approved?
It's a list. It's very technical.
What I mean is it stick, would it be stick built or would it be?
Do stick built if you meet the technical list of eight. I think it's a list of eight additional requirements that you have to meet if you do stick built. Like I said, it's related to. Additional fireproofing standards. I don't deal with the building code often, so I don't know it off the top of my head.
And then what what is actually being proposed?
There's no current proposal necessarily for, there's no. Memorandum written up about this yet, and nothing has been proposed to city council.
No, I mean, the the application.
The application does not address. Are you asking what the applicant has submitted?
Yes.
Their application doesn't address the building code requirements. It's only related to the zoning ordinance. And the review and approval criteria for the rezoning itself.
So that would be a subsequent process.
Yeah, it's completely separate from zoning.
Okay, all right. Thank you for clarifying that. All right. Just a couple of quick questions for the applicant. The first is that your traffic count, calcu- traffic generation calculations. Were brought up by one of the public speakers. And addressing. I I think maybe it was a misunderstanding and he heard that. The traffic generation would go down from the current site, but I believe. Correct me if I'm wrong, it would be based on, you're saying the reduction would be based on what could be built under the current O I zoning versus what? This would generate. Is that correct?
Let me answer that in two ways, because I, when when I heard his comment, I was like, okay, when when I heard the the gentleman's comment, not our comment. So. You know, typically you have the Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Manual. That's kind of like the standard. That the engineers use when they're doing their traffic studies or trip generation. So looking at the difference between a senior adult housing, that manual says. Point one six trips per unit. So for us, that would equal about thirty-five trips compared to a. Clinic, which is five point one eight trips per one thousand square feet. So it it's kind of technical, but. The in general, the residential use would be a lower trip generator than a office use. Or a something under the current zoning. I believe what the gentleman was referring to was in the staff report, and I think that that was. On page three of the staff report. That was. Referencing the afternoon peak hour, so like rush hour trip generation. Was eighty-one trips and for this senior housing, which is based on the calculations that I mentioned, it would be forty-eight trips. And so. That is common. We see that frequently when you have a. Office use, got people coming in and out of the office, and that is usually a higher. Traffic intensity than the residential use, and especially when we're talking about a senior residential use, that brings it down even further.
I got you. So it's not based on actuals, it's based on the type of use that's currently there versus the type of use proposed?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. And then one other comment that came up that I just wanted to address was. The I just kind of. Maybe getting a little nitpicky here, but I'd just like to. Try to address questions that come up in the public comments, but the mention of the. Power outages and what would happen with elevators and just wondering if you could. Speak to what may or may not happen in that kind of situation.
Sean, I don't know if you want to address it, but I mean, I I think that, you know, again. Dominion has been around for fifty years. They've got extensive portfolio of senior housing and so, you know, they are confident and comfortable. With what they have proposed. As we have mentioned before, not only are they, you know, I think quality, long-term developers in this senior housing space. They also are long-term owners. So this is not a merchant builder who's going to build a community, lease it up and sell it off. They are going to develop it. They have their own property management company that does serve the community as well as. You know, owning it long-term. So I I don't. I don't know that we have any specific responses to, you know. Maybe some of the the what ifs, but certainly feel comfortable with their prior experience that this will be. Safe and adequate for the senior residents that it will be serving.
And then.
Let's let's add something really quick. You know, one of the other things is we we have safety protocols, evacuation plans, they're written, they're documented, they're provided by our management agent to all of our residents. Then the other thing is, we're like, like Julie said, we're we're in this to own it long term. And while we're owning, you know, buildings, if there's continued issues of power outages, you know, and our residents are complaining. You know, we we have a lot of buildings where we go out and we'll and we'll develop a backup generator. Now. Based off of somebody saying, hey, there's power outages in this in this area, I, you know, we're not going to go buy a backup generator because of that. But at the end of the day, we're we're in this for the long term and for our residents.
That's all I have.
Can I? Would it be appropriate for me to address the height issue that you were asking staff about?
Sure.
It was just something that I I wanted to mention. I think, you know, when we're talking about the rezoning, obviously, we're focusing on what we're asking for, but I did notice. I I think. The majority of what I heard is is certainly the. Desire to have owner occupied, not not rental, but as it relates to the density under the current O and I zoning. That height is seventy feet. And so just to that seventy-foot maximum. On our site plan for the building that faces Ashford Dunwoodie, our building height there ranges from fifty-five. To sixty-six feet. And so I know that in the draft for the comp plan for for the, you know, Ashford that. That certainly looking at, you know, some areas lower and then that five-story. But I did want to make the point that that would be, that would not override what the current zoning allows. And so I did want to just make sure that the commission was aware. The current zoning would allow a seventy-foot building on that property, just to provide that. Perspective. I don't know if it's helpful or not, but but thought that it was worth mentioning.
An office building, but not a residential. And the 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 new comp plan. When adopted would not allow that for a residential building. It would be capped at four stories, I believe. But I I get what you're saying.
Yeah, but the underlying zoning does. And so unless and until that zoning was changed, you know, the the.
Right, I get it. We're just talking about office versus residential, and I want to make sure that. Clarify that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Wallach.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions for the applicant before you sit down. And for some other folks as well. There seems to be some. Question between your presentation and some of the objectors as to whether it's fifty-five head of household versus fifty-five. No exceptions. Could you please clarify that one way or the other?
Yes, sir. Fifty-five years and older to reside at the property. This is not a fifty-five and older head of household. Where you have a grandkid that could live with you. This is not. Other programs that people might be getting confused about. This is fifty-five and older to live on this property. Zero impact for schools.
Okay, thank you. When you were talking about the trips figure. And it comes down to forty-eight. Are the trips you're talking about trips by residents or all trips that involve egress and ingress from the development? Because. As somebody, there was, one of the commentators made the distinction that you may have various food delivery. Or whatever coming in and out, and I'm wondering whether you're comparing. Residents to the business or whether you're comparing all trips to the business.
Yeah, the the numbers that you have heard and that you've seen in the staff report, those are based on the Institute of Transportation Engineers. I think it's typically I T E. In fact, I had to write it down, so I didn't butcher it, but that's the trip generation manual. So what it does is it's. It's got a table of all sorts of different uses. And then calculations. And so sometimes the calculations are made based on the the square footage, but it's not a. It's not a breakdown of this actual specific. Site. It's just a uniform guide that's used in the industry to try to be able to make comparisons on a uniform basis.
I understand that.
If I could clarify. The I T E numbers are literally there was a I T E person sitting there and counting cars going in and out. So they're all in, they're all inclusive of every trip that is happening.
Thank you, Paul. He knows more about I T E than I do, so thank you.
Okay. I have a question for staff. I don't mean to put you on the spot. It's only one thing. About how many homeowners are there in Dunwoodie? And that would include single-family homes, condominiums. All of the different owned homes in Dunwoodie.
Yeah, I actually randomly randomly looked this up today. And that answer is a little bit complicated, but there's like sixty percent. Of residents in Dunwoodie. So sixty percent of residents in Dunwoodie live in owner-occupied buildings. Forty percent of residents live in rent occupied buildings. And now household sizes are a little bit different, but it's a sixty-forty split between.
Okay, so and we have a population figure of fifty-five thousand?
Yeah, but more than fifty thousand.
So.
But thirty thirty thousand of residents live in owner households and twenty thousand live in rent households.
Okay. Thank you. And I have a question for Mr. Brown. Yes, sir. You won't be up there long.
Sorry.
How many members are there of the Dunwoodie Homeowners Association?
It fluctuates, but we count our rolls at approximately eight hundred members.
Thank you.
Good?
I'm good.
Ms. Sellers, really quickly, I think most of my questions have been hit, but when the discussion. arose that was initiated by Commissioner Brown. Regarding the composition of the construction, you look like you might have had something to say about that, and I'm interested to hear that.
Oh, certainly, and and. I think we tried to touch on this last time, you know, what we have requested, we have not sought any kind of relief. So for, you know, our intention is to build pursuant to. The city's code. So that would require either the, if it's stick-built. Under today's standards, it's got to have the extra bells and whistles as Madeline was talking about, or it would have to be the concrete and steel. As you all might. Recognize, construction costs fluctuate. And so, you know, I think at the time of construction, certainly running numbers to see. What is going to make the most sense, but it would certainly comply with the city's code.
Okay, so it's your position that under the city's code as it's written today. This would be still a profitable undertaking. Your your plans are not contingent upon it changing.
That is correct. That is correct.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, Commission. Are there any other further questions? Did some of the confusion that you. Cited, did that resolve? And do you have questions springing forth from that?
Yes, that cleared up. Everything I. Was mulling over, so.
Okay.
I don't have any more questions.
So with that in mind, at this time, it would be appropriate for us to. Put forth a motion. Anybody care to take that on?
That we approve the application as written with staff's five conditions. That are on. Staff recommendations, the five staff recommendations.
Okay, you move that this be approved with staff's five recommendations. There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Wallach seconds. We've got Commissioner Cameron making the motion. Commissioner Wallach seconds. With that said. Is there any commission discussion amongst ourselves?
I would just like to point. I would just like to point out. We've heard an awful lot. From the Dunwoodie Homeowners Association, which has been extremely important in the history of the city. However. I'd also like to report. Or add that while their membership is eight hundred citizens. Of Dunwoodie, that comes out to less than three percent of the homeowners in the city.
All right, thank you. I'm going to ask that we we keep that to a minimum, please. Is there any other? Commissioner Brown, look like you might have had something to say.
No, again, I just, I I want to reiterate that I don't think it fits the forthcoming vision of. The comp plan that's under progress in terms of density and height. But it does otherwise conform to the one that is currently adopted. Look, we're unpaid volunteer board here. We have to make a decision. Council is the one that ultimately is going to have to decide. Which vision we need to hold to, and I will. Try to move this forward and let them make that.
All right, with that said, we've got a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Any other questions? Any other comments? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the motion, raise your hand. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries four to one. Commissioner O'Brien dissenting. Thank you, everybody. Move forward to new business. Item five. Actually, before we, excuse, yes. You know what? And I and I think we're going to go ahead and and take a, this is a prime opportunity to take a quick break. It is seven fifty-four right now, according to the computer in front of me. We're going to go ahead and start promptly at eight oh five. Eight oh five.
My whole career has been about not making friends. What health differences it make?
That's public work, but I, I get the reason you're frustrated.
Well, I'll, I'm gonna look into it further. I'm gonna look into it. Right, but it's the staff's job to be diligent, and I don't think diligence was done on a critical. I think it's a lot of, it's interesting to me, I'm super frustrated by traffic. But it's interesting to me looking at the demographic. It would be customers of that facility. I don't know if you turn around and look at the audience. I thought younger people would be here with kids that have to travel around to pick them up and deal with the traffic. I think they actually should hold a lot of faith in since. Representative of their target customers. Or at least target demographic.
So. I get it. I support the project. Maybe should have done a traffic study, but even then, it's a moment in time. It's not factual.
This, this traffic study is factual.
Really?
Yes, they said it, the engineer will sit out there and out the cars and they'll add.
Literally, but that, but that's what they did, and that's why the traffic's getting worse and worse. It's like. If that's the group, we should stop all the.
We should stop dense development, or we should invest in our infrastructure. Not to take out a right lane up here, which is considerably faster. Over here with the library, it's not put in a right turn light. Just to the left, which they have more people turn right, like we're not making any traffic. Street infrastructure decisions, yet we're proving higher density residential.
So little things are fucking doing up there.
Narrowing it further than what it was back to make it even worse? Yes. When, when, what, what is that meaning?
I'm not sure. Uh, just keep an eye on the agenda.
Oh, my gosh, okay, so we lift it. I, we'll ask you a question. Before somewhere else.
We're full in here, almost full.
Every city center.
Standing.
The amount of people that's here tonight, is that not representative of?
I mean.
Concerned?
Yeah. But they have a legal obligation to. Look at the compliance.
Right.
Which drives it and weigh it based on.
It shouldn't be based on a number of things. One is rezoning. It's not the current zoning application today.
Right.
The other is the impact on the community. And for being, the reason I didn't speak because I didn't sign a card. The impact for me is traffic.
Yeah. You can get up in the street.
All right, thanks very much.
Yeah.
Again, disappointed, I would highly encourage you guys to do traffic studies. And certainly not reduce lanes or make more decisions on traffic, although I don't know that that's your job.
If it's not, so public work.
Okay, all right.
Thanks.
It's forty-five minutes. I waited this layer right here, and then they turn right off when there's no help, it's gonna be bad. I wait for the traffic, I wait to cycle twice. You know, essentially. You know, to get straight. Build the one back traffic. Then you go back, you didn't put a right turn on there or somewhere later, so. You gotta cycle at least a light to make the right on the chip. Then I can go on, I make the right in the summer, I gotta go straight and then go to the loop. So adding to the calories and the calories and it makes traffic worse. And then we're making poor decisions on infrastructure, road infrastructure, which make traffic even worse. So if I were you guys, I would have done a traffic study that read these intersection. And then it talks about, I'm a small range person. And you don't have to do it on this one, you do it on this traffic. Lessening, you know, let alone. Not less than. So it's a negative. Do you agree with that? It's a negative impact, so what's there to that? They're not entitled to do this. Sure.
So. Those traffic is. Whatever, whatever you want to. Seeing that they. And they, you know, they. Based on those, they had the inputs. Those are, are not, one of the, one of the. That's gonna make it better.
And they.
But, but, but that's kind of, that's by the study. Be, because of box studies, so that's a. For most of those.
Because it was a negative impact. It's not a negative.
So. So for the. I know. And so you'd be better placed.
Still, some will make their.
Yeah, who else anything was coming up? Like I said. Before. Before I made the motion. Yeah, I, I don't think it depends on. So it doesn't matter. The one that's currently in place, which was created by the system. And if we're taking all taxes to judging it against that criteria. Should fit second criteria. And in council, that's why I said what I said, it's. Judging it by the. Uh, and. A city leadership says, no, unless we go. And that's their decision. They can overrule that. I mean, we're, we're just a representative. Our best, you know what I mean? I. It's very hard. The case, and a lot of our cases get complicated. So many of them. We need to go either way on them, you know, we, we do our best, you know? And it's not going against the citizens. There's a, there's a vision that was set by the citizens. It's trying to.
All right, team, I'm gonna recommend that we go ahead and call us back to where we still have a good amount of agenda. All right, uh, let's go ahead and uh. Call us back to order. It's eight oh seven. It's a couple of minutes after I told you I would and uh. Apologize if I interrupted any conversations, but we're gonna go ahead and keep pushing forward to our new business. Next item is item five. R G twenty-five dash oh five and SLOP twenty-five dash oh four eighty-four perimeter center east. Request for a major modification of the zoning and special land use permit conditions of cases R Z twenty-three dash oh two and SLOP twenty-three dash oh three. To modify existing zoning conditions, update the site plan. And include hotel and owner occupied condominiums as allowed uses. As well as a special land use permit for a drive-through restaurant. Madeline, take it away.
Welcome back. Um, that was a mouthful. I will not uh, go ahead and repeat that. Um, the subject property eighty-four perimeter center east is. The property we're talking about tonight. It might look a little bit uh, familiar. Um, you guys saw it back in twenty twenty-three, um. And then it was also here in twenty twenty-one. Um. The actual property eighty-four perimeter center east is the former uh, bank. Uh, it's vacant now. It's right across from the gas station. On perimeter center east and right across the street from the perimeter mall. Um, so right sort of in the, in the heart of uh, the uh, perimeter center. Um. It's gone through a couple iterations over the years. I'll just talk about the most recent uh, iteration, the zoning from twenty twenty-one. Which allowed a mixed use redevelopment with a maximum fourteen-story building. Um, with a uh, two hundred and twenty-five unit age restricted rental housing project. And uh, commercial uses such as retail and restaurants in a three-story building along Ashford Dunwoody Road. You can see that site plan down um, in the bottom right. What the applicant is requesting to do today and. Essentially, this is acting as a major amendment to that twenty twenty-one rezoning and twenty twenty-three rezoning. The twenty twenty-three rezoning didn't touch the site plan. Um, and it didn't touch those conditions. The only thing it did was remove a condition uh, related to timeline and construction. So. What they're requesting today is a change to the site plan and a change to the conditions. They're asking to expand the types of uses allowed within that fourteen-story building. They're requesting for flexibility. To allow it to either be fifty-five plus apartments, which it's already approved for. For owner occupied condominiums or a hotel. Just to note condominiums and hotels are um, technically allowed uses by, in the perimeter center district. But those zoning conditions restrict the use of the multi-story buildings, so they're asking to amend that. To again, allow condos and hotels. Um, which are allowed in the P C dash two zoning district. They're also requesting um, to um, add uh, another special land use permit. Um, they received a couple special land use permits um, as variances essentially to a couple of the requirements of the P C dash two district. So this would add another request um, for a drive-through restaurant to that special land use permit request. Um, and that would go in um, a one-story building along Ashford Dunwoody with the um, drive-through to the rear. And overall, the proposal is just inclusive of the general site plan amendments. Um. Which include changes to the layout of the building's layout of the site, layout of the parking. Um, and to adjust the approved conditions to accommodate this updated proposal. So this is just a site plan comparison. Um, the, on the left is the old site plan. You can see there again, three-story building along Ashford Dunwoody. And then the fourteen-story building to the rear. Um, this is. Um. The proposal was originally more of like a cohesive connected building. The fourteen-story building was connected to the three-story building with like a pedestrian plaza situation. Um, so it was much more of like one mass of a building. Um, and then the current site plan breaks up the different uses into their own individual buildings essentially. Um, but it also reconfigures the parking lot. So along Ashford Dunwoody, it would be the one-story restaurant. Um, currently, um, the uh, occupant they have lined up for the restaurant is a, a chain called Portillo's. And then add to the corner would be a two-story retail building. And then to the rear, it would be the parking deck and the maximum fourteen-story building, which could be either. Um, fifty-five plus apartments, owner occupied condos or a hotel. Um, the little middle part with the surface parking lot is different. Um, it's been reconfigured to accommodate the drive-through lanes. Um, and also um, an increased amount of surface parking, but that surface parking is still below. What the maximum allowed surface parking would be for this under the P C dash two requirements. They're also showing a pocket park. One thing I do want to point out is that the pocket park is undersized for the open space requirements for the P C dash two zoning district. Um, they just need to really play around with the dimensions on that so that it meets those requirements. Another thing about this site plan is while it doesn't show the streetscape improvements. Um, they are still required, um, you know, and. The, those would, even though they're not shown on the site plan, are part of the exhibits. Um, and would be um, enforced as part of the project. So these are the elevations and renderings that were part of the project. The elevations on the left are what was originally submitted. Um, under the um, twenty twenty-one proposal. It's not actually reflective of, you know, the current site plan's proposal because. You know, those buildings have been broken up, um, especially the ones along the street. They're no longer, you know, a three-story building. Um, and then the Portillo's rendering that's included in there um, is not based on the site conditions. Um, and it doesn't show the drive-through either. So these are more illustrative than. You know, something that we would condition them to. Um, but they just sort of give a general sense of the architectural requirements for the P C dash two zoning district. Um, this application also includes a phasing plan. Um, so the applicant is proposing to first do the restaurant and retail portion, the surface parking lot. And then a portion of the parking garage. Um, and the applicant would first build out three stories of the parking garage. Um, because the Portillo's um, in the retail, um. Um, the existing surface parking lot doesn't, doesn't meet their. Parking needs essentially. Um, so the, the decked parking is necessary. Um, surface parking would um. You know, if they were to build a surface parking lot that met the needs of these businesses, it, it wouldn't um, meet the code essentially. So that's why they're proposing to deck the parking. Um, so they would do the first three uh, stories of the deck, and then phase two would be the completion of the deck, so adding additional stories. And then adding the um, uh, maximum fourteen-story building atop uh, of that. Um. One thing I'd like to note is. We do really question the phasing plan and the feasibility and the realisticness of this. Um. We're having a hard time understanding, you know. We're having a hard time understanding, you know? We don't think it would be possible necessarily to keep the parking deck open during active construction, so these are just sort of minor. You know, things with the application that that we sort of question. You know, overall, with the current middle, it's really difficult to determine the compliance with. The total approval criteria due to lack of detail. You know, certainly with a drive-through, um, that's a larger traffic generator than any of the previously proposed uses. You know, and, um. There would need to be significant roadway improvements along perimeter center east. You know, in order to make public works, uh, comfortable with this. Again, a realistic phasing plan has not been provided, we also don't have details, um, on the unit mix for things like the condominium, so it's really hard for us to determine, you know, what the impacts on schools would be. You know, which is part of the criteria. So based on these current materials, we don't recommend approval of the subject request, of course, should you guys choose to approve. Um, the application tonight, we do have recommended conditions and I'm happy to to pull those up for you for reference. I mentioned Public Works on the last slide. Public Works has recommended that a roundabout be added to perimeter center east to accommodate traffic, wanting to go westbound along perimeter center east. That was something that was brought up very recently, um, but I just wanted to make a note of that because they did, you know, mention that to us today. They're currently in talks for the new design for perimeter center east with, um, Kim Lee Horn right now, and that was brought up. Um, so I just wanted to make you all aware of that. Uh, but overall, if you guys have any questions about the application, I'm happy to address them.
Good evening, everyone, my name is Din Webb, eleven oh five West Peachtree Street, Atlanta, Georgia, three oh three oh nine, here on behalf of the applicant. Before I begin, let me introduce John Di Giovanni, John is here on behalf of property ownership. I am happy to say as much or as little about this application as you'd like to hear, but I'm here to request a thirty-day deferral for both the SLEP and the major modification. We have business reasons behind that request, but we also know that we need to do some modification to the application to provide the detail that staff. Requires, we sort of got into a time crunch there around the filing deadline, and that's why there are some things missing from the application. For example, you know, staff mentioned that they questioned the phasing plan, we actually have or had lined up for tonight. The contractor who will build this parking deck to come and explain to you how this will work, I've I I had some doubts in the beginning myself. But I. Demanded frankly a call with this person, and I don't have doubts now, he's got a. This is a a nationally known company that builds these things and deals with this in 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 major cities all over America, and they have a plan, so when we come back. That person will be with us to explain exactly how the phase is gonna work, and I think it'll satisfy you because again, I, you know, it was hard to kind of conceptualize myself. But having talked to him, uh, there's a plan and they can do this. So our request is for a thirty-day deferral, uh, to allow us to do these things, I will, uh, mention that staff has suggested that we try and solicit some feedback from you guys, so when we do come back. We'll have, you know, the issues you would like addressed, address, so I I would like to take a moment, if appropriate, and ask you if you would like to share some feedback that would. We could, uh, respond to in thirty days.
Uh, staff, uh, I know that we are capped on the number of deferrals we can impose or we can ask for, but when it is applicant asking for, that does not count against. Okay, okay. Well, I I again, I I'm. I don't know if there are questions, but I will say one of the things that's very, very, uh. Makes the drive-through more palatable to many is understanding the traffic impact on the, uh. On the immediate areas, both from a from a curb cut perspective, from a noncoming traffic perspective, as well as from an overflow perspective. And, uh. We looked at a traffic study earlier today. For another case. That was able to scientifically communicate. That there wouldn't be a burden on the surrounding area, uh. That's certainly helpful, so I'll throw that out there, again, I wouldn't dream of telling you what to do, but I will tell you, from my perspective, that makes. That makes the analytics at least puts puts a little science behind it.
Got it.
So, um, team, do you do you all have any questions or or guidance? Yes, sir.
Just, uh, quickly wanna introduce that we have a public hearing at this, and we have, uh, a public comment cloud for this.
All right.
If you want to open it.
All right, tell you what, let's, okay, before we, uh. Before we do that, we're gonna take comment, but I would ask us to to in addition to.
And if I need to, I will formally request a reserve of my time.
I we'll figure it out together. Okay, so we're gonna open it up for public comment now. Uh, we've got, uh, we'll do ten minutes for and ten minutes against. Uh, at this time, anybody wishing to speak in favor of this, please come forward and be heard. Seeing none, we will move to those against. Anybody against, please come forward, uh, well, actually, I'll call you, Guy De La Justina.
Good evening, Commissioner, thank you again, uh, Guy De La Justina, housing in the perimeter, live right here, um, once again. Agree with the comments from the the city staff and, um, once more an application for a drive-through in an area that we. Should treasure as the, you know, gateway into the city and reduce the amount of drive-throughs we already have planning. Housing, condominium, hotel, all those things on the application, they they probably seem fine for that site. And the drive-through is just the part that I think we should not, um. Agree with, once again, just to, you know, get landlocked with that for for multiple years. Love Portillo's, by the way, just a shout out, been to Chicago many times, great place, great hot dogs, great Polishers, um, let's try to. Maybe ask you guys, you know, like, build a place where people go and gather there instead of just being the transit bar, I understand the revenue model probably. Makes more sense for you, right, you get more churn, right, more people going in and out. But but give it a shot, you know, like, go to Ashford Lane, walk into those restaurants there, you know, and and see people gathering around, like, I think that's. That's what we want to build here in this part of town, thank you.
Thank you. Will anybody else be speaking against? All right, seeing, uh, seeing none at this time, we will move forward to, uh, commission questions and discussion. We'll start to my life, Commissioner Gordon.
I don't have any questions.
Commissioner Cameron.
I would like to hear. Um, more specificity about the type of building, the second structure that's going to be built, we were, we've got hotel condo fifty-five plus. I think it would be helpful for us to. Review that knowing what it's going to be. The. One of the principles of the city that we've been told is green space and having an undersized park. Doesn't make people very happy. So being able to expand the park. To comply with the current zoning. And maybe even including extra makes people happy. Um, and then I had just had a question about the roundabout location, I guess it's really not relevant, it's not your question, but, um. I guess when we discuss it, we can talk about it.
Yeah, I I we don't have any designs or details, I just wanted to mention that, um. It was a discussion we had with the Public Works Director earlier, um. He requested that if it were to be approved tonight, that there was a condition added about that, you know? Requiring it to be approved subject to, you know, uh, roadway improvements approved by Public Works, but. There are no specific dimensions on it or anything, and we're hoping that with the extra time that the applicant is requesting with the deferral, that we can work more closely with Public Works to maybe get. A little bit more specifics for you all on that, but.
Right, I I'll kind of agree with the sentiments of staff that it seemed like the the site plan is a little bit of a downgrade from the previous, we went from something that looked. Like an urban center to something a little more, uh, auto-oriented suburban, uh, with the. Breaking up of the buildings and the, uh, the, uh, one-story and two-story instead of multi-story with continuous facade, um, also the the drive-through. I've heard a lot about Portillo's in terms of it being tasty, but I'm not familiar with the restaurant, is it? Is the typical Portillo's a a drive-through or most of them drive-throughs or i- i- and? With that question, is there any consideration for maybe? The fact that you're near transit and walkable for not having a drive-through?
Yeah, you know, the the I've tried to avoid the word drive-through here because Portillo's is a different type of restaurant, it is a gathering place, has anybody ever been to Portillo's? Okay, so you know, I mean, i- i- it's an event, I mean, you go in, thi- this building will have a two-story facade, it will have a two-story interior. You know, there are, uh. There's seating arranged around the cooking areas and there's there's a lot of noise and a lot of, you know, hoopla, it's it's kind of like. An upgrade of the varsity, varsity isn't a fast food restaurant per se, it's it's an event, you know, I'm 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 a native Atlanta, I love the varsity. Because I like the vibe in there, obviously, the the caliber and the quality of foods a little bit higher, Portillo's and the varsity, no offense to my friends at the varsity. But it it's 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 more along those lines, it is a place to gather. And the majority of their business is sit-down traffic inside the restaurant. What they need is something really more akin to, uh, curbside, right, we we're, that's how I refer to it. They're gonna do about thirty percent of their business through the curbside window, and 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 this is not a drive-through like Chick-fil-A is. Chick-fil-A does eighty percent of its business out of a window, here you pull up, there are folks. Uh, in the parking lot with iPads, they'll take your order. You 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 rest and someone actually physically comes out of the building, they walk through a door, there is no window here, they walk through a door, hand you your food, and you leave when it comes, you don't wait in the order that you ordered. Your food is delivered when it's ready, so it's it is a different experience. Uh, and to touch on that fellow's comment, there will be no impact to the pedestrian circulation here, we're not, there is no curb cut on Ashford Dunwoodie proposed. The two curb cuts on perimeter center east exist now, so that whatever breaks in traffic already are there. What you'll see along the frontage is the PCID streetscape. A restaurant building and in between the two will be the 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 outdoor patio, so all activity will be be behind the building, and again, we're talking about a much lower flow of of traffic. It doesn't operate like a traditional drive-through, but it falls under that category here in Dunwoodie, it will be somebody walking food out to. Someone who ordered online or someone who called in who's going home to to meet up with their family, but. It's, uh, I I encourage you to look up the restaurant, this this is a unique. Opportunity for Dunwoodie, this is not a Zaxby's, it's not a Chick-fil-A, it's not anything like that. Uh, I don't really know what to analogize it to other than the varsity, and again, it's 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 similar in the feel and the vibe and the energy, but it's a different type of restaurant, but it's it's incredibly popular. Uh, and and all of the new, uh, restaurants, I understand, and this is sort of a new rollout. Uh, what they're proposing for Dunwoodie will be a signature location for them. You know, all of these have some variation of this curbside pickup, but again, we fall under the category of drive-through here because of the the way it operates, well, I I don't, I don't call it a drive-through.
Is there a a local example we could check out that has this kind of? Non-drive-through, drive-through situation?
Not yet, there's one coming, uh, uh, the the only other Portillo's in the state of Georgia is coming to Kennesaw. But it's not, my understanding is it's not complete yet.
So is it, is it more like, um, what's the shake place?
Well. I mean, it's more, you know, what was the hamburger place over there by the where State Farm is now, Fuddruckers, remember that back in the old days? It it's it's a little bit more like that, but not cheesy in the way that that was cheesy, it it it's that size, it's that sort of energy level, there's sort of a a theme to the restaurant itself, and. At least that's my recollection, I haven't been to that Fuddruckers in twenty-five years, but that's the way I remember it, but it's. Look online, you'll 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 get a feel from the images, and we submitted some with our application, by the way, but you'll get a feel for what we're talking about. Through the website, through the images, and I'll bring plenty of that next time I come, and I think we may have some folks from Portillo's here next time. Yeah, it it, I said, i- i- it is unique, it's unique to the state of Georgia and certainly the Atlanta metro area. Where did you, where is the one you went to, if you don't mind me?
I've been to multiple in Chicagoland and Orlando.
Okay.
So I'm I'm a big fan of the Italian beef. Uh, I I am generally not a big fan of drive-throughs either, and so my ask to you, or being would be, if we can make this look like a drive, less like a drive-through and more like. The concept you're sharing, and I don't know if that's a reality, but I think I think the headwinds you're gonna experience largely center upon. A traditional drive-through experience, and when you look at the picture, you look at the top down and you look at the experience. It doesn't sound like what you're communicating, but when you look at the picture, it sure does kind of look like every other drive-through that that seeks. Uh, permission to operate.
We're still working on that, uh, that that. It's a long story, but yes, I hear what you're saying, I agree with you, and and I think we 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 will come back with something better.
Okay, okay, anybody else have thoughts to share? All right, somebody want to, uh, form a motion at this point?
Sure, I'll, uh. At the request of the applicant, I'll move to defer. RG twenty-five dash oh five and SLEP twenty-five dash oh four, uh, to the. Already August planning commission.
I would say that August regular schedule.
Good, the August regularly scheduled planning commission.
All right, Commissioner Ron moved, is there a second? All right, Commissioner Cameron's second, having a motion or second, is there any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed, like sign, that carries, thank you, look forward here and further from you. All right, uh, next item of business, item six. Review and consideration. A text amendment to the code of the city of Dunwoodie for chapter twenty-seven, including section twenty-seven dash fifty-six, section twenty-seven dash seventy-two. Section twenty-seven dash one oh four, section twenty-seven dash one oh seven B, section twenty-seven dash one one two and other sections. The general purpose of which is to create zoning regulations and procedures for group living uses and for other purposes.
And good evening, Mr. Chairman, good evening, Commissioners, uh, this text amendment. Is, uh, sort of one in a series of of these that that you all you all have had, like, over the last, over the last couple of years. Going around, but we ended up calling community residences, uh, recovery communities, um. This, the last version of this was adopted, I think it came through your three times, um, eventually was adopted in July twenty twenty-four by the city council, um. And in a form sort of for community residences, recovery communities, um. Uh, with, uh, buffer requirements and, uh, with inclusions in the the use table for those users, uh. Quick, uh, summary, uh, in the next bullet here. Both of those are intended as, uh, residential facilities, so they're residential, they're not outpatient. They're, uh, facilities where people stay overnight and 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 live. When this is for people who generally have protections under federal law, including Fair Housing Act and Americans with Disabilities Act. The most prominent, uh, version of this. Uh, was initially started as like the drug treatment, that's how we started, but we, it really is for broader group of people who need assistance. In, uh, in their daily life, and. We had this go through a legal review, uh, recently, and out of that, like, there's been recommended changes. To the currently adopted ordinance. That aren't supposed to be, uh, substantive changes to the ordinance i- itself or substantive changes to the current rules, but more like. Uh, changes that clarify, um, the intent behind these rules and then adjust. Procedurally, the the approval of them and. I'll, um, I have this slide here to highlight, uh, the most important ones, but we. I have it printed out too, we can go through, uh, them as needed, again, like, no substantive changes. Uh, biggest change here is, uh, clarification that this includes users such as personal care homes, assisted living communities. Intermediate care homes, you may remember that as part of this, when we did the, uh, community residences, we struck out a bunch of other uses out of the use table. So we struck out personal care homes, for instance, um, to replace them with these community residences. The the big reason being that, uh, both people who are undergoing substance abuse treatment and people who are. Elderly and need assistance are both considered a protected class and have the same protections. So we 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 intended to treat same, uh, same as same. And this is more a clarification of this, um. Second here is that the ordinance as adopted. Spelled out that the special land use had to be, uh, approved, uh, the applicant had to demonstrate. That it meets the requirements by, uh, what's called like the clear and convincing evidence standard, that's a legal term. Uh, that is typically not applied in, uh, in zoning, uh, but as a lower standard, which is, um. The, um, a preponderance of of the evidence standard, which is a lower legal standard that generally has to be met. The, um, this was not sort of us and staff sort of coming up with this, but was a legal review at the time recommended this clear and convincing evidence standard. And it's now recommended to take this out to make it consistent. With, um, the remainder of the zoning ordinance. Uh, what it does is by taking it out is just like it is applied as any other special land use permit. Um, and then there are some minor changes to the language in here regarding the approval passes and the contents of operations plan, but like a. A shell is replaced with a may or like a resembles with the. a a different word. We have Angela Paltz here, who's a attorney for for the city, who is better able to speak on some of those on some of those, you know, specific changes from from a legal perspective. Should you all have questions? Otherwise, we're recommending approval of this, which would then go to the city council for for final approval once you all make your recommendation.
Good evening. Angela Kowtch here again on behalf of the city. Happy to answer any questions. But Paul pretty much covered what we're trying to accomplish here. Trying to make sure that this portion of our zoning ordinance is consistent with other portions of our zoning ordinance and to clarify what what group homes and what types of residential occupancy and dwelling units would be treated similarly and and how all that will work out with respect to the criteria needed to be shown.
All right, well, now we'll open up for public comment. At this time, is there anybody here speaking in favor? Anybody here speaking against? Seeing none, we'll move forward to questions and discussions from commission. You know what? We'll mix it up and start to my right. Commissioner Wallack.
I have no questions. I read it this afternoon. It makes sense.
All right. Mr. Brown.
Thank for me.
Commissioner Cameron.
I just have one question. It's about the legal standard. You've got a bunch of lawyers up here. I'm just curious about why there's we put a legal standard in this ordinance. Is it required or just?
With this change, we're removing it.
Well, and I saw that, and you're not putting in the preponderance of the
Okay, you're not. And what this does is it just, it makes it consistent with the other special land use applications where there isn't a specific legal requirement burden to be met.
That's all. Thank you. It was more curiosity than anything.
Commissioner Gordon.
No questions.
All right, with that said, I don't have any questions either. Anybody want to form a motion?
I move that we adopt the changes recommended to the aforementioned portions of chapter twenty-seven.
All right, that's a lot neater saying it than the the way I did. There's a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, Commissioner Wallack moved. Commissioner Brown seconded. At this time, is there any discussion of the motion? Seeing none, all in favor, raise your hand. All opposed, like sign. It carries five nothing. Thank you, everybody. All right, at this point, is there any other business? Is there any public comment? Is there any commission comment?
I just have a comment. I jokingly said earlier that I angered my entire neighborhood. And I I hope that anyone who would look at watch this recording and listen or listen to this meeting could please understand the purpose of the planning commission. And Commissioner Brown described it well when we were answering public comment earlier that we're a recommendation body and we are charged by the mayor to look at the current comprehensive plan and the ordinances of ordinances of the city and the recommendations of staff and decide whether applications for land use permit or special land use permits and rezoning comply with the city's requirements. And that's what we do. And the vitriol spewed by some of our fellow citizens is disturbing to me and disappointing. And I wish that some of them had stayed so that, but I'm going to see them in my neighborhood anyway, so I'll tell them the same thing.
Thank you. Any other commission comment?
I'll just second all that, what Commissioner Cameron said, and then just also state that, you know, some some folks after that that case, you know, said that we were going against the citizens of Dunwoody. And I just want to remind everybody that we are citizens of Dunwoody and we try to make the decision as best we can. So just wanted to add that.
Any further comment?
I have a comment. I just want to let everyone know that this is my last meeting. The mayor called yesterday and said, my time has ended. I'm rolling off. So I really enjoyed working with you guys and I learned a lot.
Commissioner Gordon, thank you for your service to the body. I know you've long been a servant of the city and we've enjoyed our time with you too. So thank you for your service.
And thank all of you.
Any other comment? Thank you, folks. We'll see you next month. Meeting adjourned.